Senator will come to order. Those not having privileges, the floor will please vacate the chamber. Those in the gallery and those on the floor will please rise. We're led in prayer by the senator from Raleigh. Please remain standing after the prayer as the senator from Wyoming leads us in the pledge of allegiance. Senator from Raleigh.
Our blessed heavenly father, we thank you for the place in which we gather. We thank you for the people of the great state of West Virginia whom we represent. I pray for the business that is at hand today, that every vote would be pleasing in your sight, knowing that we will give account to you in eternity for how we vote. I pray that you would help us to do our sacred duty with clarity and conviction. I pray that you would give those that are our leaders, not only in this chamber but across the way, wisdom and strength and courage to do what is right in the sight of almighty God. I pray this in Jesus's name. Amen.
Thank you. Senator from Wyoming.
Everyone is invited to join us in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag.
The United States of America and to the republic with which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Reading the journal.
West Virginia Legislature Senate Journal, Friday, July 29, 2022. The Senate met at 1:02 PM. Senator Blair, Mr. President in the chair.
The senator from Ohio requesting am is consented for the reading of the journals dispensed with and the journal be approved. Is there objection? Chair here is none. Further reading of the journals dispensed with and the journals approved. Introduction of guest, Senator from Preston.
President, on behalf of our deputy clerk, Chris Hess, we have with us in the president's gallery today, Chris's husband, J.D. Hess, and her mother, Mrs. Palmer. If they would please stand and be recognized in the Senate, make them welcome.
Are there further introductions? If not, communications from the House.
The clerk of the announced, announced that the House refused to concur in the Senate amendments too and requested the Senate agree to conference as to engrossed House Bill 302 clarifying West Virginia's abortion laws.
Message will be received. Senior Senator from the 17th.
Thank you, Mr. President. Having voted on the prevailing side, I would move to reconsider the vote by which the Senate passed House Bill 302.
Is there discussion? If not, question is an adoption of motion by the senior senator from the 17th to reconsider the vote by which the Senate passed House Bill 302. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, no. The ayes appear to have it, the ayes do have it. I declare the motion adopted. The question now is on passage of the bill. Senior Senator from the 17th.
Thank you, Mr. President. Our question am is consent to amend the bill on third reading.
Is there objection? Chair here is none. Does the clerk have an amendment?
Yes, sir. Senator Takubo moved to amend the bill by striking out everything after the enacting clause.
Senior Senator from the 17th.
Thank you, Mr. President. Our question am is consent to explain the amendment, lieu of having it read.
Is there objection? Chair here is none. Senior Senator from the 17th.
Thank you, Mr. President. The bill has taken a little bit of a deviation here. I'd like to highlight the key important points of the new amendment. First, the amendment would prohibit abortion from being performed or induced or attempted to be performed or induced unless the reasonable judgment of a licensed medical professional that includes the existence such things as a non-medical viable fetus, the existence of an ectopic pregnancy, the existence of a medical emergency, then it would be allowed. Only a licensed medical professional, now this has been redefined as being a physician only, so either a D.O. or M.D. only that has hospital admitting privileges will be authorized to perform surgical abortions or induce chemical abortions. It requires surgical abortions to be performed at an O'Flack licensed medical facility. It creates a sexual assault and incest exemption to the abortion ban for up to eight weeks for adults. There is exceptions. A report of sexual assault or incest must be made by law enforcement and the report must be provided to the licensed medical professional that is performing the abortion. The amendment creates a sexual assault incest exception to the abortion ban for up to 14 weeks for minors. For this exception, at least one of the following must occur. Either one, a report of sexual assault or incest must be made to law enforcement, or two, the patient must obtain medical treatment for the sexual assault or incest by a licensed medical professional at a O'Flack licensed medical facility, hospital. The law enforcement agency receiving a report of sexual assault or incest involving a minor is required to report this to the state police child abuse and neglect investigations unit within 48 hours. The amendment establishes a process that must be followed when the abortion is to be performed on a minor. It requires various statistics relating to abortions be performed to be reported to the DHHR. The DHHR in turn is required to provide medical licensing boards with quarterly reports and requires electronic copy of reports to be provided to Locra. This will all be patient protected. Prohibits prescribing or dispensing any chemical or drug with the intent to cause an abortion via telemedicine. It subjects licensed medical professionals who knowingly and willfully perform or induce or attempt to perform or induce an abortion subject to disciplinary action. If the licensing board finds that the medical professional unlawfully performed or induced an abortion or attempted to do so, the board shall revoke the medical professional's license. The amendment subjects non-medical professionals to criminal penalties or medical professionals that weren't listed above, which has to again, has to be a physician, for knowingly and willfully performing an abortion. This also would include medical professionals who have lost their license to three to 10 years imprisonment. It's felony offense. This excludes mothers from being subject to criminal penalties. This sunsets conflicting abortion statutes passed during the Roe era. I'd be happy to take any questions. Otherwise, I urge adoption of the amendment.
Senator will come to order. The Senate will, the citizens of the state of West Virginia gave this Senate the constitutional power to provide its own safety in the undisturbed transaction of its business. When present in this chamber, all those on the floor and those in the gallery are expected to maintain proper decorum. If these proceedings are again obstructed, I will be forced to clear the galleries. Senate will be back in order. Is there discussion? Senator from Greenbrier.
Thank you, Mr. President. Would the majority leader yield for some questions?
Will the senator yield? The senator yields.
Thank you, Senator. I appreciate it. I'm just looking through this. We got this yesterday afternoon and started looking through it. I've just got a couple of questions highlighted here, if you don't mind walking me through it. And I'm looking at the version we just received yesterday, so I understand there may have been some slight changes. I'm on page 13 right now, looking at the exceptions. Do you need a, okay.
Get a copy.
Do you, do you want to wait or do you want me to just talk you through the issue?
I may know if you just want to go ahead and be telling me your issue.
Okay, so the exceptions, that's what I wanted to ask about first. We adopted an amendment in regards to the exceptions last time, specifically in regard to mandatory reporters and children. That amendment that we adopted does not appear to me to be in this version before us. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. That received the majority support of the body last time, but we are not maintaining that Senate position?
The reason for that of the redundancy, so anytime a mandatory reporter is, is an action like this would be presented to a mandatory reporter, by law already in code, they have to then inform law enforcement. So we feel that that is still capable and probably the more likely scenario that if a child, for example, was to be assaulted, more likely they're going to tell some individual who already in code is a mandatory reporter, who by code already has to enforce or to alert law enforcement.
Right, and that was why I think we had majority support to pass that before, because people are more likely to talk to somebody they know they're comfortable with, a mandatory reporter, but another step is required here. Okay, I just wanted to be sure. It is not what we had before. You think we're going to get to the same result, but it's not, it's not the same language.
Not the same language, but we believe the same protections are still there.
Okay. Next, I'd like to turn, it's page 18 in my copy, and again, I understand we may be working with slightly different ones. Looking at the bottom 17, top of 18, 18 in terms of the licensure penalties that could be, the docs could be subjected to. I've had some conversations with doctors trying to understand what the impact of that would be. What's your understanding? What do you think the impact of a potential loss of licensure would be to those practicing obstetrics, for example?
I think it'd be devastating, but I believe the bill also very clearly describes what the law intends, which is not to engage in abortion of a healthy fetus if it does not go to one of the exemptions of rape or incest, or if there is not a question of risk or harm impending to the mother. So currently today, if a physician does something that is against the law, they face and will likely lose their license. And so this is, this is in there. I believe the bill pretty clearly protects, and when we were here last time, the concern I have is not for somebody trying to break the law, and any law we do in here has to be focused on the intent. And the intent is a physician that is trying to help the life of the mother shouldn't be subjected to criminal penalties. And I think we've done a good job of, of. And I think we've done a good job of, of, of trying to discern the difference between somebody who is violating the law versus somebody who is simply trying to do their job.
So you, you're not concerned that we could lose docs who are practicing OB as a result of this?
We shouldn't unless they, they are planning on breaking the law.
So you've not heard from docs practicing OB who think they follow the law and they will continue to follow the law, but they're afraid that this, um, inhibits their ability to, to follow their Hippocratic oath?
Right.
You've not heard from those?
I, I've heard of doctors that have, uh, voiced concerns, and there's been lots of iterations of, of possible things. I think once they read, uh, what is in this amendment, they should feel comfortable. I mean, I certainly, um, probably the most outspoken advocate for, for doctors in the state of West Virginia, and I feel that this very clearly protects those physicians that are not trying to violate the law.
Okay, thank you, and, and I hear you, what you're saying about, you know, once they have the chance to read this, but they don't have the chance to read this.
Right.
I mean, I, am I missing something in the process here? Like, it's been forty-some days since we had special session before, we've had a lot of time where we could have involved docs, um, but now, today, we're going to vote on this language that they haven't had a chance to see.
That's correct, but they'll, they'll have time to learn it, and I think when they do, then that will ease a lot of minds.
Okay, well, just for the record, I have heard the opposite from, from those docs, but I, I very much appreciate it. The next question I wanted to ask about, again, relates to, to docs, and it's, uh, later on page eighteen, down towards the bottom. Um, there's a subsection D under sixteen two R eight. Uh, it's line seventeen and eighteen on my copy. In addition to the penalties referenced in this section, a patient may seek any remedy otherwise available to the patient by applicable law. I am not a lawyer, I'm not a doctor, uh, what are those potential remedies?
I'm going to get ready and pause this for a minute. Senate will be at ease for a few minutes, so that you can get your resources, uh, to be able to help answer this question, and, just so the Senate knows, there may be, I got a call from the House of Delegates, there may be a drafting area, era in the compromise on what we've got going on here. So, we may pause for a minute to be able to correct this drafting area.
I'm happy to proceed with a couple other questions, if that's helpful in terms of timing and then come back to this one.
Please do, because I don't think it's going to change, the, it's, it's a drafting error, it's not a matter of changing content on what's in the bill, so please proceed with that, and then when she comes back, we'll be able to help with the other.
Okay.
I think I may have some clarity, and this is what I thought, I just didn't want to speak out of turn, and so, uh, if, uh, if, if a baby is born alive currently, uh, either spontaneously induced, uh, whatever, uh, there has to be, uh, uh, reasonable efforts in current law to try to keep that baby alive, and that's all that section refers to, is that would still take place.
Well, so what, I don't understand what remedies means then.
Well, it just means if, if, uh, if a baby is born currently, you're going to make all efforts to try to resuscitate and, and keep the baby alive, so this is saying that, uh, the patient, uh, meaning the child that, that was born, would still have the availability applicable by law for them to, it would be the medical provider's responsibility to do what they could to try to keep the baby alive if possible.
Well, right, and I, I mean, I wouldn't question that, I mean, they, they've also taken an oath to do that. I mean, I, um, I don't understand what remedy means. Does that mean that i- if you think things don't go well in the scenario you described, that, that I as a patient could sue the doctor, is that what that means? Okay, the, the chairman is nodding his head. You could sue, file a civil suit against a, a doctor?
These may be better questions for the judiciary chairman, since it's more illegal.
Happy to do so, if, if the gentleman would like to. Would the judiciary chairman yield?
Senator from Morgan, yield. Senator yields.
Thank you, Mr. President, yes, I'll yield. So, I, I think the majority leader was correct, uh, this, the language, if I'm, if I found the right language that the distinguished minority leader is referring to, is in section eight of the new Article Two R, which is, uh, designed to provide protections for fetuses which are born alive, uh, presuming an attempt to terminate a pregnancy that was unsuccessful and a child's born alive, uh, and I think the gentleman's specific question was about subsection D, uh, on the next page, which says, "In addition to the penalties referenced in this section, a patient may seek any remedy otherwise available to the patient by applicable law," is that it?
Yes, sir.
And I think that could be legal remedies, a civil action, you know, if a physician in that circumstance did not act to try to preserve the life of that child born alive, uh, I think that implies that if a, if a patient had a cause of action for that, it's, it's preserved and sustained by this section. That's what I think it means.
Okay, tha- that's what I wondered, and I appreciate you taking time to answer my question. I mean, it, it seems to me, uh, a doctor's taken an oath to uphold life, but we are clarifying here that a patient may file suit against a doctor if they believe that they have, have not upheld that oath. It seems to be that, I, as I understand it, you, you would agree with that assessment?
Well, the, the Hippocratic oath that physicians take is, uh, I guess intertwined in the, in the law and the statutes we enact, I, I think that's, I think that's true.
Okay. Thank you, sir, I appreciate you clarifying that particular question. If the majority leader would yield, I'd continue with the others. Thank you, sir. Looking at the next page now, and this is under Article Five Vital Statistics, sixteen five twenty-two. Is your old copy machine broken? I personally fixed our copy machine yesterday, I'll have you know. I did. That's what it's like being in the minority. So, Article Five Vital Statistics, um, I, I see there that woman has been stricken and replaced with the word patient? Wha- what's the thinking there?
So whenever we're trying to do new healthcare law, we're just trying to keep, uh, similar nomenclature, and that's more, uh, appropriate nomenclature than saying man, woman, child, uh, because they're all patients. And so I believe this is just, uh, uh, keeping in, in, uh, consistent with what we've been doing for the past several years with all healthcare law.
Okay, so it's meant to be a more inclusive term for someone who
Yeah, I hear it now.
Could become pregnant?
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Looking next, um, underneath that in Vital Statistics subsection nine, you know, it seems to me here, um, this is a list of information that is to be gathered when an abortion is performed, and number nine in that list is the name of the licensed medical professional who performed the abortion? So, so we're talking about, just to be sure I understand, we, we are gathering information on specific doctors who perform abortions in the state of West Virginia?
Again, this may be, um, judiciary chairman, me, but I, my, my understanding is they collect that information now.
Okay, and, and would in the future, uh, if someone, um, qualified for an exception or did not, their information is, is, um, gathered just the same?
Would have to be, so if, if the, um, if the argument is, is that a physician acted, uh, out of the scope of the law and, and breached the law, and that case got referred to the medical board, um, they would have to know who, who breached the law to be able to investigate the case. So all the medical records, including the, um, attending or participating physicians and staff, would all be part of that record.
Is any of that information, uh, would it be available to the public?
No, it'd be protected.
So, information that, um, is given to, I'm trying to find the, the definition here, uh, I mean, vital statistics information is foible, is it not?
You know, it's my understanding that, that any cases like this that's brought before the Board of Medicine has to be protected for both the privacy of the provider and the patient. So currently cases will be, uh, subject to Board of Investigate, uh, Board of Medicine Investigations, and, and to my understanding, those are, those are sealed.
But the information is provided to Locra, and that information can be gained by the public, as I understand it.
That information, uh, from, from, from my understanding, and I could be wrong, but, um, the information that would be transferred to Locra would be, uh, uh, redacted numbers, so you would not know who a physician or a patient was.
Where does it say that here? I, I may be missing it, but I, I get the concept, I don't see it in the, in the language.
Well, I don't either, but that was the discussion that was, that has been had, and that, now my understanding is, is that, um, that is the way it's done now, and I may be incorrect on all this, we, we may have to, um, make a revision of that unless the judiciary chair is aware of the gentleman's question.
The, the judiciary chair looks like he would like to yield, so I would be happy to ask him to.
Senator from Morgan yields, Senator yields. I will, I just want to make sure I understood the question, is it, is the senator's question about section twenty-two of Article Five, Chapter Sixteen? Uh, the vital statistics?
Yes, sir.
Okay, yeah, so that's current law, in other words, that's, that's not a new section of code, it's a section of code that's already in the law
Right.
That requires reporting regarding abortions, uh, to the, uh, Division of Vital Statistics. And under current law, um, whenever, uh, a pregnancy is terminated in that fashion, uh, the, uh, there has to be report to Vital Statistics that includes, and I'm on, uh, I'm in that section on page twenty in my, in this copy, uh, number one, the gestational age of the fetus, two, the state and county, uh, of residence of the woman, this changes that to patient. And I think part of the, I, was, the idea behind that was explained by the majority leader or so, uh, because you can have, uh, women or girls, and they're not necessarily always the same thing, but patient encompasses both, the age of the patient, the type of medical or surgical procedure performed, uh, the method of payment for the procedure, whether birth defects were known, and if so, what birth defects. That's all current law that has to be reported now. This amendment would add to it, uh, number seven, the date the abortion occurred, eight, the exception, under section three of Article Two R, under which the abortion was performed, and number nine, new language, the name of the medical professional who performed it. So, you know, and during the forty-nine years that we, uh, operated under the law of Roe v. Wade, as the United States Supreme Court decided, you didn't have to have a reason to terminate a pregnancy. This bill will change that, and it will, it will prohibit the termination of pregnancies except in specific circumstances. So, there wouldn't have been any need before to, uh, in fact, it wouldn't have made any sense before to have, uh, the exception under which it was performed be reported. There were no, there was, there was no prohibition before, there are no exceptions, so this is gathering additional information and requiring it to go to Vital Statistics where, at least in an aggregate or compiled basis, it becomes public. That was the other part of your question, I think, was, uh, you know, we're not, nobody's reporting to Vital Statistics the names of patients, but so that the data can be mined and people can say, you know, how, how many pregnancies were terminated as a result of sexual assault in a particular year, how many were medical emergencies, that sort of thing, in the aggregate.
Thank you, sir, but yeah, but my question is about specifically, number nine, new information that is being gathered that is not being gathered currently, and that's the name of the licensed medical provider, and so we're, we're gathering names of doctors, and that information, if it's going to Locra, could be foible.
True. Yeah. That's right.
Does that concern you?
No, because I think, you know, now this bill narrows the, the bill, the amendment, if the bill becomes law, the amendment, it will narrow the, um, number of people or, uh, professions who are eligible to perform these procedures to physicians and DOs, basically. So, you know, uh, I think probably, uh, it's known who they are anyway. I mean, they're going to be largely obstetricians, gynecologists.
My concern is that they're not going to be here anymore, Mr. Chairman.
That they're not going to be here.
They're not going to be here.
Well, and I, I, listen, I had shared that your concern, uh, with previous versions of the bill that we've looked at, you know, the, um, elimination of criminal penalties, uh, and the, uh, having the, the consequence for a licensed physician be a licensure action was a measure designed to address that fear, that problem.
I understand that, sir. I, I can only share my experience in talking with several and asking them, um, and they said, criminal penalties, licensure, a potential list, you know, a fanatic could get a hold of. It's all discouraging. It all says, "We don't want you here in West Virginia taking care of our moms and our babies." And so that, that's my concern, but I've, I've gotten away from the point of the question. I appreciate very much you yielding to the question.
No, and I'm happy to do it, and I will say that, uh, you know, the, um, at least with the medical professionals for whom it will be permissible for them to perform an abortion in those specific cir- circumstances where it's permitted, um, there was, there is in this bill an effort to, uh, protect them, and, uh, of course, they, they can lose their license, but only if they perform an illegal abortion intending to violate the law. That's in the, in the definition, uh, of how we, uh, address that, it's in the licensure section. Let me see if I can find that. It's in section seven. "A licensed medical professional who knowingly and willfully performs, induces, or attempts to perform or induce an abortion with the intent to violate the provisions of section three is subject to disciplinary action." So, it, at least in my reading of this, and I agree with you, I think this is hugely important, because what you don't want, you don't want people just second guessing the judgment of a doctor that they're making sometimes in very pressure-filled circumstances, you know? This has got to be a violation that is intended to violate the provisions of, of section three before there could be a licensure action. So, it, it may not be enough, and I, I get what you're saying, you think maybe there, uh, could be, could be, should be more protections, but this is designed to provide, provide those protections for the could be, should be more protections, but this is designed to provide, provide those protections for the medical community.
Thank you, sir, I understand and appreciate that, and again, I can only, I don't know if you've had the opportunity to talk with OB docs back home, or from those, for those across the state. I've reached out to a few, and they don't feel that protection, they don't think that this protects them. But I, I appreciate you answering the question and speaking to the intent. I was starting to yield to the president, it looks like we've got a president now, so, thank you. That concludes my questions, I appreciate the majority leader and the judiciary chairman answering them.
Senior Senator from the 16th, I mean 17th, excuse me.
Chairman, Mr. President, subject to announcements, some of the Senate stands in recess for 15 minutes.
Are there announcements? If not, the Senate will stand at recess for 15 minutes. All those in favor will say aye. Those opposed, no. The ayes appear to have it, the ayes do have it. The Senate's in recess.
Thank you, Mr. President. Our question, am I consent?
Senior Senator from Seventeenth, would you repeat it? Clerk has amendment to the amendment.
Senator Takubo moved to amend the amendment on page twelve, section two, line thirty-one.
Senior Senator from Seventeenth.
Thank you, Mr. President. Our question, am I consent to explain the amendment, having it read that all amendments be considered as one?
Is there objection? Here's none. Senior Senator from Seventeenth.
Thank you, Mr. President. The amendment is on your system if you want to take a look, but it is a simple amendment. It contains a couple of technical corrections that had to be made. And then also, the gentleman pointed out a flaw that was not the intent of legislation. I confirmed that with talking to multiple members. And so, the section, Article five, section twenty-two, subsection, page twenty on the bill that everybody's looking at, will simply strike out the sentence that says, "The name of the licensed medical professional who performed the abortion." That will be removed. That information is being taken, but will not be recorded in the fashion that I described on the floor earlier. I urge adoption.
Is there discussion? If not, question for the Senate is adoption of amendment to the amendment offered by the senior senator from Seventeen. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, no. The ayes appear to have it. The ayes do have it. Declare the amendment to the amendment. Adopted other further amendments to the amendment.
No, sir.
Is there further discussion on the amendment as amended? No? Senator from Boone. Never mind. Okay. Question, if not the question before the Senate is adoption of the amendment offered by the senior senator from Seventeenth as amendment. The yays and nays going to be demanded? All those in favor will say aye. Those opposed, no. The ayes appear to have it. The ayes do have it. Declare the amendment to the amendment adopted. The amendment as amended, adopted. Question is on passage bill. All those in favor will vote yea. Those opposed will vote nay. The clerks? I can. Question is on passage bill. Is there discussion? Senator from Boone, followed by the senior senator from the fourth.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm not sure who all, which OB-GYN physicians have reached out to the majority leader or anyone else. But the ones that reached out to me are academic physicians. They teach med students and residents. They do not do abortions, elective abortions, yet they're very concerned about this, the unintended consequences. As we all know, it is hard to recruit obstetrics, gynecology to West Virginia. We have what we call maternity deserts. So, and then I've had these same people say basically, in very frank terms, that this bill where they could lose their license if they misinterpret a medical emergency. Here we are describing from this gallery what a medical emergency is to an obstetrician-gynecologist who's, you know, many times fellowship-trained. I'm not sure that we can define what a medical emergency is, folks. And that's a concern. These hard-working obstetric gynecologists in West Virginia, many of them are over sixty years old. Nearly half are over sixty years old. They're concerned about being able to recruit young OB-GYN doctors to West Virginia. I've even had one husband-and-wife team tell me that this bill passes where they could lose their license for misinterpreting a medical emergency. As soon as their youngest daughter is out of high school, they're hitting the trail. Just now, when we are bringing in new core and bringing in many jobs, good-paying jobs, manufacturing jobs, Sun Park in Boone County, for example, at Hobet, we're now sending the wrong message to them as far as whether or not they'll be able to have obstetrics, gynecology care. So, it's not the people that want to have an elective abortion that I worry about. It's the ones who want to have wonderful prenatal care, to have that safe delivery, and to raise that child. But when we're poking OB-gynecology doctors in the eye, it sends the wrong message. Women should not be on death's door before they can receive the treatment of choice. A lot of this stuff is not intended, but can result in real, again, loss of license, sanctioned. And a lot of the docs just merely won't take the risk. It creates causes of action. It creates causes of action that they don't have right now. So, it's, again, it's hard to, when I think of the unintended consequences that this bill brings forth, it's hard for me to vote yes on this, because I have listened to the specialists that are going to be impacted by this. I have listened to the families who want to have a nice, healthy delivery. Want you to consider this. Thank you.
Senior Senator from the fourth.
Thank you, Mr. President. Since before Roe v. Wade, until Roe v. Wade, the law of the land in West Virginia was that abortion was illegal, except to save the life of a mother. That's the law that's still in the books, and it's still in the courts. Roe versus Wade came along and then tied the hands of the states across the country. But it also, I think, gave people room to save face on the protection of life. So, what we've seen with legislation in West Virginia since Roe versus Wade has been legislation that pushes where an abortion can be formed without losing a federal challenge closer and closer and closer to conception. But there's always been this safety net that you're not going to get there, because federal law is going to knock it down. With Dobbs, that decision has been reversed. It's back now in the hands of the state. And what that means to us as legislators is that it's our duty now, as legislators, to decide at what age should you execute a child for the crime of their father. So, as we go into this legislation, I'm torn. We're still operating as though we're under Roe versus Wade. We're pushing it, pushing it, pushing it, pushing it, but not so far that we actually push it to conception. And we're doing it at the cost of innocent lives. And I've heard the arguments that if we can just get the abortion clinic closed, and I agree, this bill does that. This thing, this bill will save a lot of lives in West Virginia. Between now and next session, we get started. If we waited then, the, I'm confident that this bill shuts down the abortion clinic. I'm confident that it's going to reduce the abortions. But I'm also torn and disappointed that my vote now is to decide, when do you execute an innocent? That's really the decision we have before us now. It's not, how close can we push it? Because we can take it all the way. And we're not doing that. If life is sacred, when does it become sacred? So, my vote is a vote that I can go to bed and know that I'm at peace with God. That when I, my vote, and the way that I'll, in the future, as long as I get the honor to serve here as a senator, I will push this to conception as hard as I can for the innocent life. This bill doesn't do that. It stops short. And we have, we have people that I know that are voting their conscience, and it's the way to measure in every individual. I'm not holding that against any individual here, because this bill will pass. It'll save lives, but it does it at the sacrifice of others. And, you know, I've heard arguments, if you got a burning building and you can save almost all the children, but not all of them, would you do it? I'd burn the building. You know, West Virginians for Life, they're going to, they're going to score this vote, and when they score it, when I vote no on this bill, they'll score that vote no as a vote against life. They've got it wrong. West Virginians for Life is stopping at eight and fourteen weeks. I'm astounded that we have to have this debate. So, I thank God for the children that are going to be saved for this. I pray to God for forgiveness for the ones we don't, when we could have. I urge a no vote.
Is there further discussion? Senator Randolph, followed by the junior senator from the sixteenth.
Thank you, Mr. President. When this bill last left the Senate, when we were previously in, I voted against it. I think I was one of maybe only two people on this side of the aisle to vote against this bill, and for a lot of the reasons that the senator from the fourth just espoused. To me, voting for something that actually legalized abortion, first, in and of itself, was wrong. But the second thing was that I believed that the bill would not do what was the stated goal, which was to close down the abortion clinic here in town. And I think that was the right vote to make at that time. I think today, I'm going to be voting differently, and I would like to explain a little bit of why. Because some of the changes that have been made to this bill, I believe, will make that change. And that is by requiring only medical doctors and osteopathic doctors to be able to prescribe, to be able to perform the abortions, and to require the admitting privileges at a local hospital. I believe that maneuver, more than anything else that we've done, is what's going to shut down the abortion clinic here in West Virginia. And it's the only one we have. And so, I believe that it is going to save a lot of babies. I do agree that this is not the right line to draw. Eight and fourteen weeks is not the right line to draw, because that's an eight-week innocent life. And a fourteen-week innocent life that has no guilt implied or imputed to them that we're going to allow to be killed. But because of the way this bill is shaped, I think in most cases, even they will be protected. I think that there are other things that we should have had in this bill, one of which I feel very strongly about. We should be requiring, to the greatest extent possible, the collection of DNA evidence. As you well know, I've talked about that a lot. I think it's not a heavy lift. But if we're going to allow someone who's been raped to have an abortion, we have on hand the genetic evidence that will be the product of that abortion to convict that person in court who committed that rape or that crime of incest. By not having that in this bill, I think we've failed in one regard to stop future acts of rape, because we would be able to put those people behind bars if we collected that evidence. I think that there are a number of other things that should be in here that could make this stronger. I've been told that that particular piece I just mentioned is something that a lot of people intend to come back and work on in January. I wish we didn't have to do it that way. I want to thank the majority leader, because he was in large part a piece of making sure that that prescribing authority was limited the way it was. And I think that, again, that's actually where the teeth are coming in this bill. So, I'm going to vote for this today, not as an overwhelming cheer that this is the greatest thing we could possibly have done, because it's not. But it is going to shut down that abortion clinic. Of that, I feel certain. And that's why I have changed from not being able to support the previous work that we did to being able to support this piece of work. Thank you.
Junior Senator from the sixteenth.
Judiciary Chair, a question. I got a question from home asking whether nurses who assist in this are going to possibly lose their license or end up in jail if they assist in this.
Are you asking the senator from Morgan to yield?
Yes.
Senator from Morgan yields. Senator yields. Now I ask your question.
Thank you. Will the senator yield for a question?
Certainly.
Thank you. I got a question from home, from nurses who are asking if they assist in abortions, will they lose their license and potentially go to jail?
So, to the gentlelady from Berkeley, the licensure action addressed in the bill is in section seven of three, Article two R. And it says, "A licensed medical professional who knowingly and willfully performs, induces, or attempts to perform or induce an abortion with the intent to violate the provisions of section three of the code is subject to disciplinary action by his or her applicable licensing board." So, I believe that someone, you know, we define, the bill defines licensed medical professional. And so, let's go to the definition. That's in section two. And I don't know if that was changed from the last time we were here, but... And I don't know if that was changed from the last time we were here, but... On page 11, licensed medical professional means a person licensed under Chapter 30, Article 3, Section 1 at Seek, uh, 3014-1 at Seek. And I believe those are solely, let me double check, but I think they're medical doctors and osteopaths, for sure. Does it also include nurses there? 30 Article 3 and 30 Article 14. And I don't want to give you a correct answer. I'm going to rely on staff counsel here to tell me. There were previous versions where they, that, that possibility extended to other medical providers, but under this, it's medical doctors and osteopaths.
Thank you.
Further discussion? Junior Senator from the 8th.
If invited, sure, Mr. President.
You're welcome.
First, I want to say, um, you know, in talking to a number of folks across Canal County and surrounding areas about this particular issue, there are, are good folks on both sides of the issue. I think that when politics gets injected, that's when it turns ugly. And I think that's where we lose an opportunity to actually get something done that would protect all life. That's why, one reason why I object to this bill is because I believe it should be up to the people of West Virginia to make this decision. This is a decision on health care, and it's, it's a decision that is the most intimate, the most personal. I can't think of anything else that is even more intimate than this, when you talk about reproductive care. It's a private issue. And I think that we would learn a lot if West Virginians were allowed to go in the voting booth and make that personal decision in private about what they truly believe. The second reason is my objection to the exceptions as outlined in this bill. I don't believe them to be, for rape and incest, true exceptions. They're more illusory than anything else. And that's based upon facts. We all love facts, don't we? According to the Department of Justice, 65% of rapes go unreported. 65%, two-thirds. When you look at state statistics, 65, or it's at just under a hair 65. Around 65% of rapes are committed against children. Most of them fall around the age of 15. And those rapes take place 70% of the time in the home. So, it gives you, when you, when you, when you take those statistics and you put it into context, you understand why rapes go unreported in West Virginia. You may understand why, for example, the exception for rape in this particular bill, eight weeks for minors, 14 weeks for adults, is not an exception at all. Speaking of eight weeks, you know, we had the benefit 45 days ago, when this bill was taken up or considered, there were no committee hearings, and there have been no committee hearings since on this bill, here in the Senate. No OB-GYNs have been asked any questions on the public record. But we had an opportunity to talk to OB-GYNs in our caucus, and every one of them, to a T, said, "This is a bad bill. This does not protect the health care of women." We talk about life, the passage of this bill, and I don't mean to be hyperbolic, but son, I mean, sisters, sisters and daughters of West Virginia will die, because they're going to have a physician who may lose their license. And I'll tell you right now, because I have personal experience, not with being a physician, but knowing what happens to physicians who lose their license, they lose their insurance, and they're unemployable. And so, while we talk about intent, that will hang over the head of a physician when they have to make a knee-jerk or last-second decision. There's a reason why legislators don't have a say when it comes to the standard of care. It's because we are not, save for a few in this body, physicians. I can't think of a realm of care provided to the public where the legislature can tell a doctor, "You can't do this," or "Under only these exceptions." We don't need physicians to reach for the code book when they should be reaching for the American College of Obstetrics and Gynecology textbook, or the Physician's Desk Reference. Everyone in this room would want their doctor to reach for those things, and not for the code section. And so, I think we are going into an area where maybe we don't know what we're talking about, and I know I would feel safer if the people of West Virginia were able to make And so, for those reasons, Mr. President, I urge a no vote on this bill. Thank you.
Is there further discussion? Senator from Cabell.
Thank you, Mr. Thank you, Mr. President. I'll be brief. A, a great statesman, and a great Republican, President Abraham Lincoln, told us, "Democracy is the government of the people, by the people, and for the people." And President Lincoln also told us, and I quote, "What I want to get done is what the people desire to have done." Now, Mr. President, you and I, and many of my colleagues that I respect across the aisle here, voted March the 6th of 2018, voted together, you and I, and many of our Republican colleagues, voted to put on a ballot a constitutional amendment to let the people of West Virginia decide this issue. And on November the 6th of 2018, the people of West Virginia spoke, and they decided that there is no constitutional right within our state constitution to an abortion. Well, that was before Roe versus Wade had been set aside by the Dobbs decision. So, what I say to everyone is this: We trust our people to elect our governor, to elect each and every one of us in this chamber. We should trust our people, Mr. President, to vote on this issue. And I think we really missed the vote. We are really missing the vote, the, the, the vote here, by denying our people, the residents, citizens and residents of West Virginia, to decide this important issue. Thank you.
Senator from Raleigh.
Thank you, Mr. President. There are some statistics that I'd like to say also. It's amazing to me that people talk about the loss of life that will occur because of the action that we're about to take. I will tell you about loss of life that's been going on for 49 years, to the tune of some 63 million abortions. That's loss of life. And when I vote for this bill, I will vote for it, knowing that I'm not getting the whole loaf, all of what I want. But I'm going to get as much as I possibly can be, and I've talked as much as I can, and tried to influence as much as possible in the direction that I believe. Therefore, when I vote for this amendment, this bill, then I will be voting with a clear conscience. I believe I will be voting with true compassion and with conviction, and I urge my fellow senators to do the same. Thank you.
Is there further discussion? Senator from Greenbrier.
Thank you, Mr. President. I serve five counties. Only two of them have OB-GYNs. Just two of my five counties. And lots of folks in my five counties come here to Charleston for that maternal care. Other folks who are close to the Virginia border go out of state for that care, because they can't get it in my district, right now, only two out of five. Maternal health is already, already bad here. I fear that it's going to get worse. One of the docs that I met with in preparation for the special session previous, when at least we knew we were going to be dealing with abortion, said something that really stuck with me. He asked me a question that I couldn't answer. He said, "What happens to me when my patient is in a gray area, and I've got to do something? I've got to act. Do I risk doing nothing and being sued, or do I risk providing care and losing my license? What am I supposed to do?" And I didn't have an answer for him. There's been a lot of talk about the exceptions that are in the bill, whether or not there'd be exceptions in the bill, what those exceptions are. I think the exceptions that are in the bill at this point are marketing. The only medical emergencies that are allowed are the ones that politicians say are allowed. I'm not a doctor. Why do I have a say in that? I, I don't know. I didn't go to medical school. The standards that are set by the current rape and incest exceptions are so high that they can't be met frequently. They can't be met hardly at all. And I know these instances happen rarely, but they are important. And so, if you set a standard that, that can't be met, then what's the point of having an exception unless it's just there for marketing, because people want exceptions? My grandpa was an OB-GYN. He's a pretty conservative guy. He delivered thousands of kids in Greenbrier County. And I think he would be highly offended at a bunch of politicians telling him how to practice medicine. People told me that getting up and asking questions about this bill and voting against this bill is political suicide. So be it. I could care less what any political organization grades me. I have personal and religious beliefs about this issue. I've baptized and buried children. But at the end of the day, I recognize that I don't know at all. My job is to, to do the best thing possible for my people back home. And to me, in this instance, the best thing possible is that we shouldn't be making these Politicians should not be making these private, personal, immensely difficult decisions for patients. I have personal beliefs. I have religious beliefs. However, my rights end where my neighbors begin. My personal beliefs end where a mother's health begins. And I just don't think that we should be interfering in circumstances that we cannot and will not ever understand. Thank you, Mr. President.
Is there further discussion? Before I recognize the Senior Senator from the 17th, close debate. Senator from Ohio.
Thank you, Mr. President. As I had stated before, I am pro-choice, period. You know, I keep hearing about laws. I know the Senator from the 4th was talking about the law. But in this country, at one time, they had a fugitive slave law, which was a law, but was immoral. They had Jim Crow laws. These were laws that suppressed people. In South Africa, they had laws to suppress people. So, when you talk about laws, you know, all laws aren't good laws and made by men. I do not want another man making the decision on my wife's health or her life, or another woman. If we're all supposed to be equal people here, then how can another human being make a decision about the life of another human being? When I look across the room, around the room, what do I see? A bunch of middle-aged and some elderly men. Oh, well, I'm one elderly, so... But anyway, also, middle-income men. See, when you reach a certain status in life, you can think more idealistic about things. But when you're younger and you're struggling through life, the same things that you're thinking about idealistic about now, you'd be more pragmatic about life in general. Be more pragmatic if my wife or my girlfriend, whoever should carry this baby to term, if I'm not financially secure to take care of this child. Look around you. Look out my hallway. What do you see? You see young women. And we're here making a decision for all these young women, because you're never going to have to ever face this issue yourself. You're beyond, most of us are probably beyond, uh, uh, having children. Most of you have grandch, have grandchildren. And I know you say you love your grandchildren, but one thing about grandchildren, you don't have to have them all the time. Everybody say, "Yeah, they can come and visit," and I love it, but you're not going to have them every moment of the day or taking care of them. It's, to me, an arrogance when people can put their beliefs up over other individuals' I believe my thinking and my morality is as strong as your morality and your thinking. Again, I do not want another man or woman telling my wife what she should do and questions about her health. And I don't think you would want that either. Where will it stop? I don't know why this is even part of a law that needs to be made. Again, as I stated before, this is between God and that woman, and not God and this These are very complicated issues that we're dealing with. Why is it so complicated? Because it should not be here in a Senate or in a legislature, dealing with this issue. The compact that people made in this country with the government is to deal commerce, laws to, for roads, for things of that nature, buildings, certain things, but wasn't to make laws over people. And I guess the question is a philosophical question. How can you make a law that only applies to one segment of society? That was the same way laws were made over one segment of society during slavery, separating two people. Men cannot have children, so how can you have equal justice under law that, if the law would never apply to you? So, to me, that's somewhat irrational in many ways to be able to apply a law that will never apply to you. Like I said, it's easy for you to sit there and do that, because you would never have to face the consequences of your actions. to face the consequences of your actions. If you so want to do this, the next time you know of a young lady, one of these people will vote for this law, you go up to her and tell her you can't have an abortion as an individual. Don't be hide behind the laws here. I think it's a coward's way of doing it, basically, hiding behind the laws in this chamber. You, as an individual, go up to a young lady and tell her you cannot have this child because I don't believe it's right. Have any of you ever done that? Or will you continue to hide behind this law? And again, I do not want you in my bedroom or telling my wife or my daughter what she should do with her life. And that's what it comes down to. It's not about governing, basically, and one segment of society can tell another segment of society what to do. It's about ruling. There's governing and ruling, governing and ruling. And this is what a totalitarian society does, pick out one segment of society and rules over them. And again, I'm pro-choice, always been pro-choice, and I have the courage to say it.
Further discussion, Senator from Montague.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, I was kind of reluctant to stand up and speak to this legislation simply because I learned a lesson a long time ago. You don't stand on the rail when the train's coming at you. And that train is coming at us pretty quickly. I realize there's differences between us, but I respect each and every one of you for those differences. You're important to me on many levels. And while we disagree on maybe 5% of the pieces of legislation comes through here, 95% of what we do here, we are in full cooperation with each other. But I just want to make a few observations. Obviously, one of those that you're aware of, I'm 63 years old and I'm a male. And to my knowledge, there's not a law on the books that prevents me from doing anything to my body, nothing. I also know that here in the state of West Virginia, while we may think this bill's going to reduce abortion rates, what it's not going to do, what's going to increase, I should say, are unsafe abortions here in the state of West Virginia, putting the woman at risk. There are many things that we can discuss on this issue, but I think the one thing that comes to my mind just this morning, just a few hours ago, an observation in regards to all of us coming together mostly over to Cultural Center to recognize the world's largest corporation coming into the state of West Virginia to do business here. Now, 2015 and 2016, Democrats were getting their butts kicked around because it was, you've been in charge for 80 years, what are you doing? Population's running out of the state rapidly. Well, today, we came together, along with our colleague from the eighth, to welcome this corporation to the state of West Virginia, who's going to invest $500 million. And I heard the theme throughout every speech that was given at the podium, including yourself, Mr. President, that we're trying to do away with that redneck image here in the state of West Virginia, that this is a place to come and do business. But here we are on the front porch, putting our hand out to shake their hand, welcome them to West Virginia, and going out the back door, we still have a piece of legislation like this that does not welcome young people in the state of West Virginia, does not bid them to stay here, nor welcomes new population to come to West Virginia. And I find that disturbing, very disturbing, that there would be such a contrast from three hours ago to right now, to what we're doing to the people of West Virginia and the potential people who could move here for quality work, but we're taking rights away from them that they should have to protect their own bodies, to guard their own health That's not the message I want to send. And this is my last few months here in the state of West Virginia, as far as here in the Senate. And I'd like to leave here on a positive note, but this bill is not a positive note. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, President.
Further discussion, senior senator from the eighth.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. I wasn't going to get up and say anything, but this has been on my mind for quite a while. And I'm going to ask the Senator, the Judiciary Chair, if he will yield, if he may.
Senator from Morgan Yields.
Senator from Morgan Yields. Yes.
Thank you, Senator. You and I have already had this discussion, and I just want the people in this body to be able to think about this also. I spoke with the Senator from Cabo about this. And I look at law, and I look at that it is something that we enact, no matter how we feel, our personal feelings, that law is based upon action. And there can be inaction that would come with it also. There could be detrimental actions that could come with it. So I look at what we have before us right now. And Senator, what I want to ask you is that if this would not pass, then could it possibly the Supreme Court take up the decision on the injunction? And if that was done, it would take it back to the old law that's currently on the books that the Senator was talking about.
So I will couch my answer in this term. You know, I try never to predict what the legislature will do or what a court will do because you never know for sure. There is a court case that's pending now in which at least one circuit judge of this state has issued an injunction on enforcement of the statute that, as others have mentioned, has been on our books in one form or another. In Chapter 61, I think it's Article 2, Section 8, predates the statehood of West Virginia. It was actually a Virginia statute from 1849, and it's been on our books. It's been in stasis for almost 50 years now, since 1973, since the Roe versus Wade decision. That law, which is a current statute on our books, makes it a felony for anyone to perform an abortion except to save the life of the mother. There's no exception in that for the mother herself, the woman herself. We had a question earlier about can other medical professionals lose their licenses? That statute isn't really nuanced at all in a way that addresses, can you prosecute a nurse who's assisting in that? So this is a long way to get, to try to get to an answer to your question. As I understand it, the ruling that's been issued by the Circuit Court of Canal County in joining the enforcement of that statute is in the appellate process right now. And ultimately, our state Supreme Court of Appeals is the highest, you know, authority, judicial authority in the state, will, may eventually decide that question as to whether or not the injunction stays or is to be dissolved. And telling us the current level of vitality, if you will, in that statute that's on our books, been there for over a century and a half in one form or another, I don't know how that turns out. You know, I know that one of the issues that was raised in that litigation is that since the decision in Roe versus Wade, the legislature of West Virginia, this legislature has passed a number of different bills that relate to abortion, restrictions on the termination of pregnancies. Many of us were here. Five years ago, we passed a bill, I think, that said there could not be any abortion performed after 20 weeks. I'm saying that's within the last five years. One of the issues that the judiciary is going to have to grapple with, and I guess Judge Tabbett did in Canal County, or was it Judge, it was one of the circuit judges in Canal County, I'm not sure which, Solango, Judge Solango. But you have a statute, on the one hand, that's 150 years old, that says no abortions, it's a felony. You have other enactments of the legislature that followed Roe v. Wade that say you can only have an abortion if the gestational age of the fetus or embryo is under 20 weeks. It prohibits it over 20 weeks, and by implication, perhaps permits them under 20 weeks. There are lots of legal issues, and I am absolutely incompetent to predict how that litigation turns out. So to your question, I think if this bill is enacted, that which is before us now, it changes that landscape. It probably, and I'm saying probably, you won't hear me use words that have a degree of certainty in them, but I think it probably renders that litigation moot because we would be changing the statute, not just that statute, we'd be enacting other statutes that all address the same question. Now, that doesn't mean there won't be court challenges to what gets enacted here today. We've seen lots of enactments of the legislature get challenged in the judicial branch of the government. But let me go back to your specific question, which was, is it possible, is it possible that what we end up with, if we don't do anything now, is the law as it has existed in that statute 6128 now? I have to say the answer to that is yes. That is possible. That is a possibility. I'm not saying it's a probability. Again, I disclaim all predictive power over what courts will decide when they grapple with a question, but it certainly is a possibility.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And that's, that's how I have to look at this law. If it doesn't pass, what could happen? And what's before us right now, if it doesn't pass, then it could very well go back to what the law is in place. I've asked that this body consider that. Thank you.
Further discussion for our recognized, senior senator from the 17th closed debate. Senior Senator from the 17th closed debate.
Thank you, Mr. President. And first and foremost, I'd like to thank every single member of this body for maintaining the decorum of the Senate, for having good debate. This is an extremely emotional, personal, religious, philosophical issue for each and every single member, just as it is in every workplace, every household, every family throughout West Virginia. And so it's difficult. Our senators will be making a vote for many reasons, and I'm not so sure that a yes or no vote can be accounted for any one specific issue. There's so many variables and factors, but what I do know is that we do have to do something. And in this day before us, in September of 2022, each and every senator has had to look at a multitude of facts and take all those things into careful consideration, and they've brought that to the floor and in meaningful discourse, did so in a very professional manner. And I'd like to thank each and every one. A couple of things that have been said, though, in closing debate that I would like to address. One is, is I would say that most physicians and medical personnel in the state know that we're very fortunate to have medical people serving our state senate, and we go through great pains to make sure that everything we do is done in a manner that benefits the patients and also the providers. There is concerns, I know by my OB-GYN colleagues, that maybe we're doing something that will make their lives more difficult. I would just like to point out, and again, I know they haven't had time to read and digest, but in the term of a medical emergency, I would say that this actually updates that definition, where it says, means a condition or circumstance that so complicates the medical condition of a patient as to necessitate an abortion to avert serious risk of a patient's death or serious risk of substantial life-threatening physical impairment of a major bodily function. So it broadens the definition out so that if there is any question whatsoever, that there is detriment to the patient who is also a life that is just as important. And then if you go down and look at the other definitions, it says that in order to violate this law, before a physician would ever have to be concerned about them being wrong, they would have to knowingly and willfully perform, induce, attempt to perform or induce an abortion with the intent to purposely violate the law. So for those physicians, I think they need to look that closely, and I think that there's been painstaking detail so that we err on the side of a physician that is trying to take care of a patient and not violate the law. The other thing that was mentioned was the voters should have a voice, and I would argue that they do. I mean, I think this debate today shows very clearly, we were all saying here, each senator represents about 105,000 people in West Virginia. And if you go into any sector of this state, and you're going to have the same kind of debates that you had here today. And so the people of West Virginia, I feel, do have a voice. And then there was another comment talking about the rights, and I've said many times on Senate floor, I'm a 100% personal freedom individual. And in my vigorous attempts looking at not smoking with children in the cars, I've many times said that my rights end when they bleed over onto somebody else's rights. And I understand that a mother has rights, but then the question is, when does that baby have a right? And so for those reasons, every senator will take all that into account, make a vote. I hope we have clearly went through everything that we possibly could. I urge passage.
Question for the senators, shall the bill pass? All those in favor will vote yea, those opposed will vote nay. The clerk should prepare the machine. Has every member voted? Has every member voted? Just so the clerk closes the machine, ascertain the results on this question. 22 yays, 7 nays, 5 absent not voting. More than a majority of those present voting, having voted in affirmative, I declare the bill passed. The clerk has the title amendment.
Senator Takubo moved to amend the title of the bill.
The question is on adoption of the title amendment. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, no. The ayes appear to have it, the ayes do have it. I declare the title amendment adopted. Senior Senator from the 17th.
Mr. President, I move the bill being made effective from passage.
Senior Senator from the 17th moves the bill being made effective from passage. All those in favor will vote yea, those opposed will vote nay. The clerk should prepare the machine. Has every member voted? Has every member voted? Just so the clerk closes the machine, ascertain the results on this question. 24 yays, 5 nays, 5 absent not voting. More than two-thirds of those elected to the Senate having voted in affirmative, I declare the bill effective from passage. The clerk will communicate the actions of the Senate to the House. Senior Senator from the 17th.
Mr. President, I move the comments from the senators from Boone, the senior senator from the.
Out the side doors, please. We'd like to conduct business. Come here and go out the side doors. Thank you. Would you make your request again, please?
Thank you, Mr. President. I move the comments regarding the bill we just passed from the senators from Boone, the senior senator from the fourth, Senator from Randolph, junior from the 16th, the junior from the eighth, Cabo, Raleigh, Greenbrier, Ohio, Montague, and the senior senator from the eighth be printed in the appendix of the journal.
Is there objection? Chair, here's none. So ordered. Senator from Morgan.
Thank you, Mr. President. I request unanimous consent that we return to the second order of business.
Is there objection? Chair, here's none. Senator from Morgan.
Thank you, Mr. President. Joining us in the chamber today is a former icon of this body, a former member of this body, a former clerk of this body, Mr. President, our former senator. Please help me welcome Clark Barnes to the.
Please help me welcome Clark Barnes to the Senate chamber.
If not, senior senator from the 17th.
Thank you, Mr. President. Our question is unanimous consent to introduce a resolution from the floor.
Is there objection? Chair, here's none. The clerk will report the resolution.
Senate Resolution 304 by Senator Blair. Mr. President, creating a select committee on alternative educational opportunities for the 85th legislature.
Senior senator from the 17th.
Thank you, Mr. President. Our question is unanimous consent that the resolution be taken up for many consideration. Committee reference be dispensed with and the resolution be placed upon its adoption.
Is there objection? Chair, here's none. The clerk will read the resolution.
Senate Resolution 304, creating a select committee on alternative educational opportunities for the 85th legislature.
Question is on adoption of the resolution. All those in favor will say aye. Those opposed, no. The ayes appear to have it, the ayes do have it. I declare the resolution adopted. Senior senator from the 17th.
Thank you, Mr. President. Our question is unanimous consent to introduce a resolution from the floor.
Is there objection? Chair, here's none. The clerk will report the resolution.
Senate Resolution 305 by Senator Takubo, raising a committee to notify the House of Delegates. The Senate is ready to adjourn. Signee die.
Senior senator from the 17th.
Thank you, Mr. President. Our question is unanimous consent that the resolution be taken up for many consideration. Committee reference be dispensed with and the resolution be placed upon its adoption.
Is there objection? Chair, here's none. The clerk will read the resolution.
Senate Resolution 305, raising a committee to notify the House of Delegates. The Senate is ready to adjourn. Signee die.
Question is on adoption of the resolution. All those in favor will say aye. All those opposed, no. The ayes appear to have it, the ayes do have it. I declare the resolution adopted. The chair would appoint the senator from Tucker, the junior senator from the 17th, and the senator from Montaguilla to notify the House of Delegates that the Senate has completed its labors and is ready to adjourn. Signee die. Senior senator from the 17th.
Thank you, Mr. President. Our question is unanimous consent to introduce a resolution from the floor.
Is there objection? Chair, here's none. The clerk will report the resolution.
Senate Resolution 306 by Senator Takubo, raising a committee to notify His Excellency the Governor that the legislature is ready to adjourn. Signee die.
Senior senator from the 17th.
Thank you, Mr. President. Our question is unanimous consent that the resolution be taken up for many consideration. Committee reference be dispensed with and the resolution be placed upon its passage.
Is there objection? Chair, here's none. The clerk will read the resolution.
Senate Resolution 306, raising a committee to notify His Excellency the Governor that the legislature is ready to adjourn. Signee die.
Question is on adoption of the resolution. All those in favor will say aye. Those opposed, no. The ayes appear to have it, the ayes do have it. I declare the resolution adopted. The chair would appoint the senator from Logan, the senator from Jefferson, and the senator from Cabell, Sarah, to notify the Governor that the legislature has completed its labors and is ready to adjourn. Signee die. The Senate will be at ease for one moment.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move the Senate stand adjourned. Signee die.
Question for the senators, stand adjourned. Signee die. All those in favor will say aye. Those opposed, no. The ayes appear to have it, the ayes do have it. I declare the Senate adjourned. Signee die.
Further discussion for our recognized, uh, junior senator from, or senior senator from the 17th to close debate. Senior senator from the 17th to close debate.
Thank you, Mr. President. Our question is unanimous consent to introduce a resolution from the floor.
Is there objection? Chair, here's none. The clerk will report the resolution.
Senate Resolution 306 by Senator Takubo, raising a committee to notify His Excellency the Governor that the legislature is ready to adjourn. Signee die.
Senior senator from the 17th.
Thank you, Mr. President. Our question is unanimous consent to introduce a resolution from the floor.
Is there objection? Chair, here's none. The clerk will report the resolution.
Senate Resolution 306, creating a select committee on alternative educational opportunities for the 85th legislature.
Question is on adoption of the resolution. All those in favor will say aye. Those opposed, no. The ayes appear to have it, the ayes do have it. I declare the resolution adopted. The chair would appoint the senator from Tucker, the junior senator from the 17th, and the senator from Montaguilla to notify the House of Delegates that the Senate has completed its labors and is ready to adjourn. Signee die. Senior senator from the 17th.
Thank you, Mr. President. Our question is unanimous consent to introduce a resolution from the floor.
Is there objection? Chair, here's none. The clerk will report the resolution.
Senate Resolution 306 by Senator Takubo, raising a committee to notify His Excellency the Governor that the legislature is ready to adjourn. Signee die.
Senior senator from the 17th.
Thank you, Mr. President. Our question is unanimous consent that the resolution be taken up for many consideration. Committee reference be dispensed with and the resolution be placed upon its passage.
Is there objection? Chair, here's none. The clerk will read the resolution.
Senate Resolution 306, raising a committee to notify His Excellency the Governor that the legislature is ready to adjourn. Signee die.
Question is on adoption of the resolution. All those in favor will say aye. Those opposed, no. The ayes appear to have it, the ayes do have it. I declare the resolution adopted. The chair would appoint the senator from Tucker, the junior senator from the 17th, and the senator from Montaguilla to notify the House of Delegates that the Senate has completed its labors and is ready to adjourn. Signee die. Senior senator from the 17th.
Thank you, Mr. President. Our question is unanimous consent to introduce a resolution from the floor.
Is there objection? Chair, here's none. The clerk will report the resolution.
Senate Resolution 306, raising a committee to notify His Excellency the Governor that the legislature is ready to adjourn. Signee die.
Question is on adoption of the resolution. All those in favor will say aye. Those opposed, no. The ayes appear to have it, the ayes do have it. I declare the resolution adopted. The chair would appoint the senator from Logan, the senator from Jefferson, and the senator from Cabell, Sarah, to notify the Governor that the legislature has completed its labors and is ready to adjourn. Signee die. The Senate will be at ease for one moment. Senior senator from the 17th.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move the Senate stand adjourned. Signee die.
Question for the senators, stand adjourned. Signee die. All those in favor will say aye. Those opposed, no. The ayes appear to have it, the ayes do have it. I declare the Senate adjourned. Signee die. Senior senator from the 17th.
Thank you, Mr. President. Our question is unanimous consent to introduce a resolution from the floor.
Is there objection? Chair, here's none. The clerk will report the resolution.
Senate Resolution 306, raising a committee to notify His Excellency the Governor that the legislature is ready to adjourn. Signee die.
Question is on adoption of the resolution. All those in favor will say aye. Those opposed, no. The ayes appear to have it, the ayes do have it. I declare the resolution adopted. The chair would appoint the senator from Tucker, the junior senator from the 17th, and the senator from Montaguilla to notify the House of Delegates that the Senate has completed its labors and is ready to adjourn. Signee die. Senior senator from the 17th.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I ask unanimous consent that the further reading of the journal be dispensed with and it be approved as having been read.
The gentleman of 48th, Doug at Queen.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I ask unanimous consent that the further reading of the journal be dispensed with and it be approved as having been read. Are there objections? No objections are heard. Introductions. Introductions. Standing committee reports, select committee reports, executive messages, Senate messages.
The clerk of the Senate announces that the Senate has reconsidered its action and again passed with amendment and title amendment, House Bill 302 clarifying West Virginia's abortion laws.
That message will be received. The gentleman of 67th, Doug at Doyle is recognized.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Speaker. Uh, I move that the, we concur with the Senate amendment with further amendment. Uh, and the further amendment proposed is at the desk.
The gentleman of 67th, Doug at Doyle, moves that the House concur in the Senate amendment to House Bill 302 with further amendment. Does the gentleman wish to explain the amendment, although it has been read?
Uh, yes, Mr. Speaker. Thank you.
Are there objections? The gentleman is recognized to explain the amendment.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Um, many of us have talked for some time about having another referendum on this issue, uh, like the referendum that we had four years ago, which was very, very close. I think a lot of people would concede the vote would be very different now if we had it after the U.S. Supreme Court decision in Dobbs that overturned Roe versus Wade. Now, we cannot in this bill have a statewide referendum. That would require a House, a separate vehicle here, a House resolution, or a joint resolution, House-Senate joint resolution, which would then, uh, offer an amendment to the Constitution for the voters to approve. We cannot do that in this bill, but we still can have a referendum in this bill. There is precedence. Uh, we can have a county-by-county referendum, a referendum in each of the 55 counties. We have done this before. Uh, we've done it when it came to Sunday Honey. We've done it on off-road vehicles. We've done it on a number of occasions. And that is all that this amendment would do, is simply say that if this bill passes and is signed into law by the Governor, nothing happens in any county until that county has had a referendum and passed it. And for, I think that's a way of solving the problem. Let's let the people decide and, uh, Mr. Speaker, I urge the adoption of the amendment.
The question is on the adoption of the motion that the House concur in the amendment with further amendment. Lady from the 32nd, Doug at Kessinger is recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I'm going to stand in opposition of the gentleman's motion and his amendment, um, really for two reasons. The first reason is the, is what he cited in his speech, that in 2018, the state passed Amendment 1, um, and it clearly states, nothing in this Constitution secures or protects a right to abortion or requires the funding of abortion. So the people of West Virginia have already spoken on this issue and so I say that we maintain that. Um, and the second reason I'm going to oppose the gentleman's motion and his amendment is that the Senate has already adjourned signee die and so any change to this bill would totally undermine everything that we're trying to accomplish in today's legislative session. So I urge a no vote on the gentleman's motion and amendment.
The gentleman of 36th District, Doug at Rose is recognized.
As point of order, Mr. Speaker, it's my understanding the Senate has adjourned signee die and my question is whether we are able to proceed since they have already left the building.
Proceed with this motion.
Hello everyone, I'm Governor Jim Justice. What a special, special evening you're having tonight.
We may still proceed with the motion. We are free to take any action on the bill we choose.
Awarding our Teacher of the Years, awarding our service personnel Person of the Year. I mean, absolutely, this is big time stuff. You know, really in terms of, it really boils right down to it.
I rise in support of the motion and I am one of the co-sponsors.
And I don't say this egotistically, I say this factually.
I think that things, as the gentleman said, things have really changed.
I said, we've got to make education our centerpiece.
Where we are today is a celebration right now of our teacher of the year, service personnel of the year.
Everybody in this change wants people to be able to vote on issues, and that's why we did it. Several years ago, we've got all kinds of goodness, people coming to this state. County by county vote on Sunday Hunting. That was a very contentious issue for many, many years. And that was the compromise that was reached, is it can be up to each county. So we can do this. I think we should do this. It may be that in some counties, a majority of the people will not want to allow that.
And I congratulate you beyond belief.
And I think that they should be able to do that, like we did in Sunday Hunting. It may be that a majority of the people in a particular county will want to permit women to make those decisions.
I'm a real, real believer in education.
I think in my county, they probably would.
But absolutely, I have seen so much goodness that's off the chart that you can do every day.
I don't think that Sunday Hunting is nearly as important as this issue.
So to all the finalists, all the county finalists, to all the people that are associated with this contest, if you could persuade.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I urge adoption.
But really and truly, it is just really a celebration. A celebration of a selection is very, very difficult to do, I'm sure, because there's so many that are worthy.
I'm from Fayette County, but I will yield.
I congratulate all. I have seen it so many times. You know, I have seen goodness happening within all of the folks in the schools, and I'm there always.
You stated earlier, you brought up the, uh, the vote from twenty-eighteen, the constitutional amendment. Could you restate what was on the ballot in twenty-eighteen?
I think about Kathy, my wife, my first lady.
Certainly. It says, nothing in this constitution secures or protects a right to abortion or requires the funding of abortion.
What's that last part about funding?
Or requires the funding of abortion.
Thank you very much for yielding. I appreciate that.
Yes, gentleman is recognized.
That's a big difference from what we're asking. That's talking about, that's talking about taxpayer funding of abortion. And that was a close vote. That was a close vote when we voted on statewide, and now it's no longer a hypothetical.
That if we absolutely change our footprint as far as education and make education our centerpiece.
The Supreme Court has overturned Roe. It's very real. We're about here in a few minutes, I imagine, if the votes go the way you want it to, it's going to be pretty much a complete ban.
When it changes our image to the good, people want them.
It's not talking about public funding. That's what people were voting on, a very narrow vote in twenty-eighteen. They're talking about taxpayer funding. Very different from what we're asking for.
The two things, the two things that people, the top two things that people consistently-
We're asking to simply let the people of West Virginia make this decision for themselves.
Come to me about, about coming to West Virginia or-
A decision we shouldn't be making for them. That's what we're asking. I remember, yeah, I, I was first elected to this body when, um, when the Democrats moved to this side of the aisle.
Are the facilities going to be good? And the second question is, how are your roads?
Before the house flipped, when I came in and it flipped.
And with all that, those standards of life drive more and more and more goodness to happen, to happen in West Virginia. So I congratulate you.
And I remember for years and years and years, the Republicans would stand up and ask for a referendum on everything. Let the people vote.
But we've got winners all across the board.
I agreed with you at the time.
Again, thank you so much for letting me be with you. I'm right there with you, army, army.
More democracy is always better.
They'll never, ever have to worry.
Hearing more voices is always better.
I won't waver at all.
You were right then, we're right now. Let the people decide. It's too important and too personal of a decision to be decided, to be decided by people in here who, no offense, largely have no idea what they're talking about. Let the people vote.
Who introduced the state board members joining us this evening?
Question again is on the motion by the gentleman sixty-seven Doug at Doyle, that the house concur in the senate amendment to House Bill three hundred two with further amendment. Is there a further debate on the motion? If not, chair recognizes sponsor, Doug at Doyle to close debate on the motion.
The recognition of West Virginia service personnel is a program established by the West Virginia Department of Education in the recent past to honor and recognize the importance of our support personnel and the value they bring to the success of our students and our schools. Each county is invited to submit a representative for this program. Submissions are reviewed and scored by a committee.
That was before the Dobbs ruling by the US Supreme Court. I think any objective analysis of the voters of West Virginia today would say that the vote would most likely be very, very different. More, it would be most likely very similar to the similar vote in Kansas a couple of months ago, which was on language, very, very similar. Language to be added to the Kansas constitution, very similar to the, to the language we added in twenty-eighteen, and it went down fifty-nine percent to forty-one percent. I think that's about the vote we'd have here if we had a statewide referendum. Again, we can't do it that way, but let's give the voters a chance and let them vote county by county. Uh, in terms of, uh, the senate having adjourned sine die, uh, we should not care about that. I am just sick and tired of hearing people on this floor saying, the senate did something, so therefore we have to do something else. Uh, I urge the adoption of my amendment. Thank you.
The question is on the, the question is on the motion that the house concur in house, the senate amendments to House Bill three hundred two with further amendment. A roll call vote on the motion is demanded, the demand is sustained. Those in favor of the motion will vote aye, those opposed will vote no. The clerk will prepare the machine. Has every member voted? If so, the clerk will close the machine and ascertain the result. On this question, there are eighteen ayes, seventy-four nays, and eight members absent. Less than a majority in the affirmative. The chair declares the motion lost. Before the body now again is the senate message on House Bill three hundred two. Chair recognizes lady from the thirty-second Doug at Kessinger.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I move that the house concur with the senate amendment and title amendment.
The question is on the motion by the lady from the thirty-second that the house concur in the senate amendment and title amendment on House Bill three hundred two. Ladies recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I'm going to try to go through some of the changes that the senate made because the bill is in a significantly different form than what it was when it came back to us a little bit over a month ago. Um, so first, the senate amendment provides clarity to the house's clauses which discern, which declares certain articles are no longer effective unless this new article is determined to be unconstitutional. It changes the legislative findings to read as follows, that West Virginia has a legitimate state interest in protecting unborn lives and prohibiting abortions in West Virginia except in circumstances set forth in this article. It updates defined terms and specifically removes the word immediate from the definition of medical emergency and considers the termination of a fetus to save another fetus to be a medical emergency. It limits the definition of licensed medical professional to MDs and DOs. It removes the definitions of probable gestational age and qualified law enforcement. It permits the abortion of a non-viable embryo or, it, it adds embryo, um, in front of the word fetus. It permits an adult to obtain an abortion for sexual assault or incest when the abortion occurs within the first eight weeks of pregnancy and at least forty-eight hours prior to the abortion, the sexual assault or incest is reported to a law enforcement agency which has jurisdiction to investigate the complaint. And that's eight weeks from implantation. Minors and, minors and incompetent or incapacitated adults are, um, allowed to obtain an abortion in the event of rape or incest within the first fourteen weeks of pregnancy, at least forty-eight hours prior to, they have reported the sexual assault or incest to an appropriate law enforcement agency who can investigate, or they have obtained medical treatment from a licensed medical professional, um, or received treatment at a hospital. It requires that an additional report be made to the child abuse and neglect investigations unit of the West Virginia State Police within forty-eight hours, which is the same as current law. And so it just specifically outlines that that mandated reporter shall report, um, the crime, that the, the assault, um, to law enforcement within forty-eight hours. Um, if they don't, under current law, this of course is not in this existing, is not in the bill before us, but under court, current law, law, if you fail to report abuse, um, that results in a misdemeanor of ninety days and a five thousand dollar fine. If you fail to report sexual assault, it's a misdemeanor and it's six months and a ten thousand dollar fine. So it does require that those, um, reports be made to law enforcement. Um, it requires that surgical abortions shall take place in hospitals and that they may only be performed by an MD or a DO with admitting privileges to a West Virginia hospital. It further clarifies that contraception is permitted, um, and as we provide the version that we, that left the house, Plan B is considered contraception. So there is no limitation on Plan B, the morning after pill or any type of, uh, contraceptive. It requires parental notification of an unemancipated minor up to forty-eight hours after the abortion is performed when the embryo or fetus is non-viable, the pregnancy is ectopic, or there is a medical emergency. Reporting is changed from the Bureau of Public Health to vital statistics, and it's consistent with current statute, um, and it requires that a report shall be made to LACRA. It moves the born alive requirements to a new section, and so it still retains that piece of, of existing law that requires that if a baby is born alive during, uh, an abortion, then that baby will receive, um, the, the appropriate medical care to protect that child's life. Um, the penalties, there's two separate types of penalties. For the licensed medical professional who violates these requirements, um, it's an administrative penalty, um, where his license would be revoked if it is determined that he performed an illegal abortion, and for those who are not a qualified MD or DO, the criminal penalty is remained as is in the pre-Roe ban, um, at three to ten years, and it is a felony. And so, um, what we, what we're trying to accomplish with this is that with increased risk, there will be increased penalties. And so, Mr. Speaker, that is the gist of the amendment. So I urge adoption.
Question is again, the question again is on the adoption of the motion by the lady from the thirty-second that the house concur in the senate amendment to House Bill three hundred two. This is a debatable question. Is there debate on the motion? Is there debate on the motion? The lady from the fifty-first Doug at Flesch, I was recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Um, I have debated on bills like this for many, many years, and, um, what I want to say today to you and to the citizens of the state is on this button, trust women. And I'm going to say it a couple of times because I think we all really need to hear that. Um, a Republican male friend of mine asked me this question, how much more are women supposed to take? Um, and his example was social workers, nurses, doctors, teachers, they have been there for us for several, over two years now, on the front lines, and what is their reward for their loyalty? We are taking away their freedoms. Trust women and their healthcare providers. Both of those groups are capable of making difficult decisions, including moral decisions. And, and just watch. Uh, there was a poll by our state OB-GYN chapter, and, um, young voters, fifty-five percent said that they are more likely to leave the state if this bill passes. You know, we have the largest number of people who are voting with their feet and leaving our state already. Do we want to lose our best and brightest? And seventy-four percent of those young voters do not think the government should be involved in this decision. And of course, the people that are going to, uh, the OB-GYNs who we need if we want to have, uh, licensed medical professionals, um, taking care of babies and our children and births, they are going to leave because just because we took out those incredibly harsh eighteen forty-nine penalties, it still can subject them to losing their license and potential criminal penalties. Why would anyone continue to practice obstetrics and gynecology with those threats over their profession? Trust women. I talked to you before about my granddaughter who is disabled. She has challenges. She is non-verbal. She is eight. Um, and this, this, I think these rape and incest exceptions are ridiculous for people in her situation, for children in her situation. She cannot understand what pregnancy means. She cannot understand why or if she is being raped. Please, think about that, and when you think about your own daughters. Think about women in wheelchairs. Think about women who have trouble breathing and cannot run away from a rapist. Are they, um, are they going to be sophisticated enough to know whether it's eight weeks or whether it's fourteen weeks, whether they report it to the police, whether they report it to their guidance counselor, whether they tell their mom, whether they tell their dad, or whether they tell their physician? How are they going to know these rules? These exceptions, they may, may make some of you feel better, like you're helping a little bit, but you are not. This really dramatically impacts all girls and women with disabilities, and my granddaughter is going to be an adult, and we don't know what her future is going to be, but she still is likely to be vulnerable and to be rape bait. Please, don't put our family in that situation. And of course, I know my family is a little bit different than lots of other families. We have means. We're going to take care of our little baby. We're going to make sure she gets decent medical care, and I think abortion is reproductive care. It is medical care. But there are so many women, especially now, you know, when we are limiting the locations where we, we've banned the only place that does abortions in the state by this legislation. So women and girls in rural areas, their options are completely limited for making a decision that will affect them the rest of their lives. Trust women. We are capable of making moral decisions. Now, I also say trust women because I have, I'm aware that Samuel Alito and his cohorts, um, decided to take away the privacy, my privacy, your privacy. Clarence Thomas wants to take away your entire right to privacy. Um, they have taken that away for me and for you, but hopefully, there's one area they haven't taken away their, our privacy, and that is in the voting booth. And I think that a lot of people were slow to realize, for example, four years ago, what was at stake? But I think that those of you who advocate for this legislation, you are going to be sent a message, a message that I am hearing in my district, that, um, from a lot of people, and I think you're going to get a message, and I hope you listen and that you trust women. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
The gentleman the tenth Doug at Kelly's recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Would the gentle lady from Fayette yield?
Yes, certainly.
Thank, thank you. Uh, my, my concerns over this bill have not been about abortion. They've been about, uh, about the criminalization of our, our physicians, and I just want to get something clear in my mind under, over the way this bill, uh, is being presented at this time. If, if a physician performs an abortion, he has so much time, he has to report that. And that, uh, that abortion is, uh, is discussed and, and, uh, talked about, uh, by the Board of Health, or a physician's Board of Health, is that correct?
So if a physician performs an illegal abortion under this bill, so the bill requires that all abortions that are performed as the result of one of the exceptions in the bill must be performed by a licensed MD or DO with admitting privileges to a hospital. If a physician performs an illegal abortion under this bill, he would be subject to the, to licensure revocation by the medical board that he practices underneath, but there are no criminal penalties for the physician.
Who determines legality of that, of that abortion?
This, this piece of, the, the board will determine whether or not it met the standards that this bill sets forth. And it'll be history.
Somebody has to bring that, has to bring that question up somewhere.
Yes, somebody would have to suggest that he performed an illegal abortion.
Who, who brings that question up?
Anybody could, anybody could suggest that.
Okay. Now, uh, let, let's assume that the investigation takes, takes place and a medical board, uh, is, the board is going to, uh, take this physician's license, is that correct?
If the board determines that he performed an abortion illegally, then he shall have his license revoked.
And those licenses are revoked by the board, not some other as Alice Prosecutor?
Yes, correct.
Okay, thank you.
Lady from the thirty-fifth Doug at Young is recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Will the gentle lady continue to yield? Um, thanks, I'm just seeing this, and I'm, I'm looking through the senate message also. I'm, you said something about failure to report and mandatory reporting. It was my understanding mandatory reporters are out of the bill?
Well, if you're a physi, if you, if you are a licensed medical profession, professional who is, who is told that a sexual assault has occurred, you are- who is, who is told that a sexual assault has occurred, you are a mandated reporter. And so, under our existing law, you are required to report that to law enforcement, or you are subject to our existing penalties, which I explained earlier.
Where is that in the bill? Give me two seconds and I'll grab it.
Page 14, line 26, subsection D. I'm sorry, what page? Page 14, line 26, subsection D. I can read it to you if that would help.
14, 26. I don't know if we have the same pa, yeah, please read it.
Sure, it says, "In all cases where a report of sexual assault or incest against a minor is made pursuant to this subsection, the agency or person to whom the report is made shall report the sexual assault or incest to the Child Abuse and Neglect Investigations Unit of the West Virginia State Police within 48 hours."
And is, that's not current law?
No, no, that's what I'm saying. It just reiterates current law.
Okay, gotcha.
It just makes sure that they are fully aware of the fact that they need to report the sexual assault to law enforcement.
Okay, I see. And so, to make sure I'm clear, you were speaking quickly and I understand why, that's a, we've got a lot.
I just tend to talk fast, so I'm sorry.
Seems like it's pretty much an all-out ban, very few exceptions, is that?
I would be happy to go through the exceptions with you.
No, thank you.
Oh, no, actually, I think it would be help, do you want me to, do you want me to read them? I'm more than happy to read them.
No, thank you. It seems like eight weeks, 14 weeks, the 14 weeks is for a minor, but they have to report it to just law enforcement.
Or they can receive medical treatment for the sexual assault or incest that resulted in pregnancy.
Okay, but if they.
The minor, for the minor. For the adult, must, there must be a report filed with law enforcement.
There does have to be a report filed with law enforcement for a minor.
No.
For an adult, a report has to be filed with law enforcement.
For a minor, you can either, the options are to file a police report or seek medical treatment that then requires the person who performed the medical treatment to report to law enforcement within 48 hours.
Okay, so if that person needs to get an abortion, what paper are they going to take to the doctor that says they can get the abortion?
This, this bill requires that written validation must be provided to the physician performing, to the entity performing the, administering the abortion.
So.
But it doesn't specify specifically what kind. So it could be a letter that's been notarized or a copy of the police report. It doesn't specify specifically what type of written validation must be presented.
Okay, you, do you find it to be potentially problematic that there's not like a specific form?
Not at all.
So I mean, you could just like have a note that was like, I went to the doctor, I, this is what happened.
And then the onus would be on the provider to determine whether or not that is a valid, that it accurately reflects what has occurred.
So they've got to investigate at that point in time because we don't have a form?
It would be their determination whether or not they are willing to accept that type of written validation.
Okay, that sounds a little sketchy to me, but, okay. That might be all I have right now. Also, there's a 48-hour waiting period for minors, is that correct?
That is correct. Unless it's like an ectopic pregnancy or there's a risk to the mother, there's a 48-hour waiting period unless those, unless there's a potential risk to the life of, to the mother.
The 48 hours is, so the 48 hours only applies to rape and incest minor victims? I don't think it applies at all to medical emergency.
Give me one moment and I will confirm that. It definitely does not, that definitely is not the case in the event of medical emergencies.
Okay, that's what I, I thought.
If that was your question.
I thought so too. But if it is rape or incest, they have to wait 48 hours?
Yes, unless there is an emergency.
Why, do you know why that is?
I guess to give accurate ti, enough time to notify parents, as is what is required under our existing code.
Is there a potential, if the parent brings in the minor and the parent's sitting there and they're aware, they're notified at the time, do they still have to wait 48 hours?
They do, yes.
Okay, so there's no, no ability to waive that?
No.
Okay. And I did see that if the, if they do seek medical treatment for sexual assault or incest, that the licensed medical professional that treats them cannot be the professional that performs the abortion?
Correct. So the individual who provides medical treatment cannot then be the same medical professional who administers the abortion?
Is there a reason for that?
That would, I guess you would have to ask the people who wrote it, but that's the, the way that the amendment has come to us from the Senate.
I'm pretty sure that was in the House bill originally. Okay, I just, I just really worry about rural areas that don't have a lot of providers, period. I know that's a problem. I think that's all I've got, thank you.
Okay.
The gentleman on the 37th, like a Pushkin, is recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Point of inquiry, just for clarification, the motion, the question is the motion to concur, correct?
Jim is correct.
Okay, so it's whether or not we agree with the Senate version of a House bill, right? What we're voting on is whether we, whether or not we agree with the, what the Senate sent us, their version of the House bill, correct?
Jim is correct.
And then if we were to concur, then there would be another vote on final.
There will be another vote on passage of the bill, Jim is correct.
Thank you. Would the, my friend from Fayette, please yield again?
Yes.
Got it right this time. But thank you. So what we're getting at is basically with the difference between the Senate version and the version that we sent them. So they removed any of the criminal penalties on doctors, nurses, and healthcare workers, correct?
On doctors, on MDs and DOs, they removed the criminal penalties.
Okay, so nurses could still face criminal penalties?
So under this piece of legislation, the only people that are allowed to administer abortions are MDs or DOs. If it is found that they performed an abortion illegally, they are subject to license revocation. The other side of the equation are anybody else who performs or administers an abortion is subject to the felony charge and is subject to three to 10 years.
Okay, so there still are some criminal charges, but just not for doctors?
Yes, there are, there are increased penalties for increased risk.
Okay, and then it changed some of the reporting requirements that we're placing on victims of rape?
They tightened up the reporting requirements because I think you would probably agree that we want to make sure that every single rapist is behind bars and can no longer continue to assault women. And so this will hopefully help us put men who think it's okay to use women's bodies for their own benefit under the jail.
Okay, well, I agree with you in theory, but unfortunately, it's the most under-reported crime that there is.
And abortion is the mo, I'm sorry, say that one more time?
No, you're getting ready to make that a crime. It's not a crime right now. Rape has been a crime for a long time and it's under-reported. So my next question is.
And hopefully this will increase reporting so we can take care of it.
You have a requirement, okay, it's a 48-hour, 48-hour waiting period for the victim of rape?
There is a 48-hour waiting period for an abortion to be performed.
Okay.
Under that exception.
So you can notify the parents?
It's just a 48-hour waiting period unless there is a, unless there is a risk to the life of the mother, unless a medical emergency is at stake.
Okay, thank you for yielding. I just wanted to clear it up, what we're actually voting on here, thanks.
The question again is on the motion by the lady from the 32nd that the House concur in the Senate amendment. The gentleman on the 36th, like a Roe, is recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I would like to ask a few questions too. As I heard you say, I think that the morning-after pill would not be effective.
Correct.
And as I read page 15, that's perhaps not true.
It is true. If you will turn to, let me find the definition here.
Page 15 refers to contraceptives.
Yes.
Preventive devices, but you've, you've got another provision to look at?
Yes, yes. So in the definition of, give me one second here, of pregnancy, it requires implantation. Plan B prevents implantation, which is still permitted under this law.
Now wait, say, what page are you on? I'm sorry.
Give me one second here. Page 12, line 55, at the very bottom of the page, "Pregnancy means the period of gestation after which a fertilized egg has been implanted in the wall of a uterus." And so the way Plan B works is that it prevents implantation. So it would not be prohibited under this piece of legislation.
So the morning-after pill does not induce.
It is not considered an abortifacient in this bill.
It, the morning-after pill does not end the very beginning of a pregnancy.
The, based on the way that this bill is drafted, it would not be prohibited because it prevents implantation into, in the uterine wall.
Well, as I read page 15, it seems to be more specific on page, sub B at line 56. The way I read that is that the only things being allowed are contraceptive devices, which mean preventative devices.
I'm sorry, I think, you, give me one second, page 15?
Maybe I've got the wrong section.
So back on page 11, there's a definition for contraception and it just says contraception or contraceptive means the prevention of pregnancy, which we define by implantation, by interfering with the process of ovulation, fertilization, or implantation.
Right, it's preventative. But if there were a drug that was not preventative, but in fact stopped the beginning of a pregnancy, that would be illegal. And as I read this, only contraceptives, only preventative drugs to prevent there being a pregnancy are allowed. And that any drug that would be something that would induce an abortion the day after would be illegal under the bill. Now that's the way I read this.
And that's, so the way Plan B works, you can go to a pharmacy, you can buy it, and you take it the morning after or within, I think it's 48 hours unless you're ovulating, it'll work. And so what happens is it prevents implantation. And so this bill specifically says, which prevents pregnancy as defined in this bill. So what this bill does is it says that pregnancy begins at the moment of implantation. Anything after that that would terminate the life of a human being would be prohibited. Because Plan B does not, because Plan B prohibits implantation in the uterine wall, it would not be considered an abortifacient and is therefore not illegal based on this legislation.
Is implantation conception?
No.
Or after conception?
It is after conception.
So this bill does not eliminate, so this bill does not take us back to conception?
Correct. This bill takes us to implantation, yes.
And the day-after pill would be after conception, but before.
But before implantation.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Lady from the 4th, like a Sukoff, is recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Will the lady continue to yield?
Yes.
Thank you. And I apologize, we've been given such little time to review this and come up to be prepared. So I have many, many questions, but.
That's, okay.
We've obviously agreed as the majority party that we are not going to stand with what we had passed and had much discussion on and debate the last time. So I feel like we're being given an unfortunate, unfair opportunity to be prepared to ask these questions. So I apologize if I go off the rails a little bit.
You do not have to apologize, that's what this process is for.
What happens if we have a young child who's been, a young girl that's been raped by her father and her mother chooses not to do anything about it because that father's the sole provider, she doesn't want him to go to jail, and she's not, does nothing to help with her child? And a couple of weeks later, the child can't stand it, she's worried, am I going to be pregnant, am I not pregnant? And so she tells someone else. And they take the child to a physician. What happens to that minor child if the parent, if the parents have chosen not to help their child against her wishes?
So there's a judicial bypass within this law where she can, she can go before court and get permission from the court to move forward with the abortion without parental notification.
And how long does that take?
It actually requires it to be done, I believe, the, within 48 hours.
So we have 48 hours and then we add another 48 hours after. She sees a doctor to confirm that she.
It would, it would actually be the same 48 hours. If she went in for the initial consultation, that 48 hours starts. Within that 48 hours, she would, she could petition, she could petition the court. And then also, within that 48 hours, that same person who received the report is required to file a police report with appropriate law enforcement.
Yeah, and then at that point, her parents are going to know that she has turned her father in for rape and incest. And where's she going to stay?
Are you suggesting that it would be better for her to stay with the parents who are assaulting her?
I'm not suggesting anything, I'm asking what happens.
Well, I hope anywhere other than with them.
Okay. I would hope so too. But these real-life situations happen.
Yes.
Even though we don't want to acknowledge it. And I also think that what happens if she has to leave a rural part of the state because the only OB-GYN in that state, in that county, cannot perform the abortion and it has to go to another area? And how many, I guess my other que, I'll finish that first.
Okay, so can you, can you tell me your question one more time?
Yeah, what happens to that? You hope that any place but home, what if she doesn't have any place to go? CPS, I guess we're going to count on them to come in and take over. We know they do such a fantastic job in West.
There would be an emergency petition filed with the department and those, that child would be removed from the home that she is being assaulted in and placed in a safe environment where she doesn't have to worry about being abused and assaulted by the parents she should be able to trust.
And how long does that take?
It would be immediate. If there's, if there is an emergency situation like that, she would be removed immediately.
Okay, and then CPS would guarantee that she would be taken to another part of the state to have the abortion performed if that's what she chose to do? And it falls within the guidelines of this bill?
Are you, are you saying like the CPS worker would take her to get the abortion?
Yeah, I guess the foster parents would have to agree going in, or whoever takes the child in would then, then be responsible as well for getting her the medical care that she wants?
Yes.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that I understood all that because this is giving very limited time for a child or a young person who's raped by their own family member to kind of make these decisions, especially if it's a girl of age that's never ovulated before, doesn't even know she could potentially get pregnant. And Dr. Ellington has, and previously when we had these discussions, talked about that can happen. You know, you can have a child who's not ovulate, never had a period before, never menstruated before, and doesn't even know that she has the option of being pregnant. And she might not know that until she starts showing and feeling different.
And she'll have until 14 weeks?
Yes, 14 weeks, yeah.
To obtain, well, actually, where would you, where would you suggest that we, that we limit that?
That, you're asked, I'm asking the questions.
Okay.
Thank you. I've already talked about that on the floor previously, so my position's been very clear.
Gotcha.
Okay, now, do we know, have we done any research in this short amount of time that we've had to know how many hospitals in West Virginia actually perform abortions as they are? And I ask that question because I live in an area where Wheeling Hospital doesn't perform abortions because they're, even though they're affiliated to WVU, they are a Catholic hospital and they would not perform them there. And so I wonder, do we know how many hospitals qualify under the, in West Virginia under this law?
All of them would qualify, but they could determine whether or not they.
How many actually will perform the abortions is what I'm asking?
I can't tell you that.
Yeah, we don't know that.
Probably the same as right now are offering them.
How many are offering them right now?
I can't tell you that.
Yeah.
Which is why the reporting requirements are so important in this bill.
Unfortunately, we're going to have lives ruined because of reporting requirements and as we use them as the test cases to build that out, unfortunately. That's all I have, thank you.
Okay.
The gentleman on the 43rd, Thompson, is recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Would my friend still yield?
Absolutely, anything for you.
Thank you. So I just want to clarify to you.
I'm glad I wore flats today.
Oh, good. I do too. So my question, because this has been a lot, you know, from what, our version to the House, the House version, went to the Senate, it's changed. I'm just trying to make sure I completely understand the changes here. So our House version had 14 weeks for minors and for adults?
Yes.
And then it went to the Senate and then they've changed it to eight weeks for adults?
An adult.
14 weeks for minors or incapacitated?
Yes.
And right back, okay, yes. So my question is, can, I don't understand this, can maybe you provide some light on this? And by the way, his light is distracting me, can you turn it off? New guy, your light is on. New guy. Your light is on. Thank you. Um, so, uh, why would we change that and make a difference between adults and minors in the weeks? What is the rationale behind that?
So, that was actually in the, the bill the Senate sent back to us a little over a month ago, so that would've been a really great question to ask the Senate.
It would have, yeah, because I, I, I don't understand that because, um, and as an adult, you're an adult at eighteen years of age. So, even if you could still be in high school, and if a young lady is raped when she's eighteen, still in high school, she would no longer, that magical number from seventeen to eighteen, she only has eight weeks now versus fourteen.
Eight weeks for anyone over, for any adult, and, uh, and fourteen weeks for a minor or an incapacitated adult.
So, if she's eighteen and in high school?
She'll have eight weeks.
She only has eight weeks.
From implantation.
Alright. Um, and the way this is written now, we kind of talked about this, but I want to, I had this question because, um, in this medical procedure of an abortion, a physician is probably not just in there by themselves, I'm assuming. I don't know, but I'm assuming they would have somebody in there assisting them, a nurse or something. Wouldn't the nurse who's also in that, uh, because we've, would the, would they also face any civil criminal penalties or also be in jeopardy of losing their license, or?
This requires that the doctor must be the one to administer the abortion.
So, if the doctor's administering it and the nurse is assisting, they would not be?
She, she would not be a foul of the law.
Okay. Um, would the hospital also face possible litigation?
No.
Nothing? Okay. Um, and then my friend from the fourth was kind of bringing this up, and I kind of just wanted a little bit of clarification, because I saw that problem as well. Um, young people or people who are removed from their homes, or also even, like I said, that eighteen or nineteen-year-old girl who is low income, they, doesn't have a car, doesn't have access, how would they be, uh, and they make the police report, they've been fortunately been raped, how would they, how would they then have an avenue to have this procedure?
Are you asking me how they would, like, get there?
Yeah, like, is there, because you know, we're, we're ensuring that this is now required, you have to have a police report and everything, so we were kind of taking the, the responsibility, you know, making sure that it's, it's pretty restricted, and it's, how would we, how would they then qualify for, you know, to get, to have this procedure, because we don't know where it could happen?
So, they would utilize the same transportation that they would today. If they're going to seek an abortion today, they, however they're getting there today would be the way that they got there after this.
Yeah.
And there's also victim advocates that are available as well.
And so, but, and for right now, though, if this eighteen or nineteen-year-old wanted to seek an abortion, they would have twenty weeks, though, correct?
Up, up to what our current code is?
Yeah.
Yes, twenty weeks.
They'd have twenty weeks, but now we're going to take it down.
For any reason whatsoever.
Yeah, we're going to take it down to eight weeks. Okay. Okay, that's, uh, all I had, you know, thank you so much for answering. Um, I, I just think this is a little, well, not a little, I think it's a lot. It's a, it's very restrictive. I, I don't understand this moving, um, to eight weeks with all these restrictions. And I don't think these restrictions are truly, and the exemptions are truly exemptions. The way we are, this is written, it's very restrictive, and we're going to limit truly the people who really need these procedures. Um, so, that's all I have to say, thank you.
Question again is on the motion by the lady from the thirty-second, Doug Cessinger, that the House concur in the Senate amendments to House Bill three hundred two. Is there additional discussion on the motion? Those ladies wish to close debate on the motion. If not, the question is, shall the motion be adopted? Those in favor of that motion will please say aye. The opposed roll call vote is demanded, is the demand sustained? Demand is sustained. Question is, shall the motion by the lady from the thirty-second, that the House concur in the Senate amendment to House Bill three hundred two be adopted? Those in favor of that motion will vote aye, those opposed will vote no. The clerk will prepare the machine. Has every member voted? So, the clerk will close the machine and ascertain the result. On this question, there were seventy-six ayes, eighteen nays, and six members absent. Majority of members voting in the affirmative. The chair declares the motion adopted. The question now before the House is, shall House Bill three hundred two as amended by the Senate be ad, pass? Question is on passage of the bill as amended. Is there debate on the bill? Is there debate on the bill? The gentleman fifty-first, Doug Garcia is recognized.
Well, thank you, Mr. Speaker. So, today was supposed to be a day of celebration. Berkshire Hathaway, two hundred jobs in Jackson County, diversification of our manufacturing and our energy economy. But somehow, we like to snatch defeat from the jaws of victory. So, that won't even be a front-page headline tomorrow. This will. Instead, this ugly and divisive bill, you know, the, the medical decision to have an abortion should be made by a family, and not this legislature, not the people who are in the Capitol, not the people, the people who this affects, or those people that are back in our districts. And I've heard Republican leadership in the House talk about all these economic announcements that we've made, all these different job opportunities that have come about, which has been very good for the state of West Virginia. And I heard the, the Senate President last night talk about, uh, more babies being born in the state of West Virginia. Maybe that's what this is about. But, since I've gone home, since July, and talked to the people in my district, I've heard a lot of different things. I've had a mother come up to me and tell me that, you know, she's putting a lot of pressure on her daughter when she finishes high school. If she gets a job or goes to college, it shouldn't be in West Virginia, should be somewhere out of state. There's a young woman I talked to today, said that she has chosen to stay in West Virginia. But she is questioning why that state legislature is continuing to attack her. I've, I've heard from multiple, multiple couples who've had difficult past pregnancies, medical issues, who have in fact gotten, not going to get, they've gotten vasectomies and hysterectomies because of the fear about this law, and what that might do to them. I've talked to physicians who tell me about the difficulties in recruiting professionals, doctors, physicians, to rural hospitals. That's already an issue, and how they believe it's going to get worse. And I've heard from young people disgusted that we are taking away, we are taking away a right that has been with people for the last forty-nine years. So, I always try to say to the people back home that the number-one priority that I have as a legislator is to make sure that there are opportunities for people to stay, rebuild, and succeed in West Virginia. And there may be opportunities to stay, rebuild, and succeed, but we may not have the people to put into those opportunities. So, I hear, I hear people, I heard people in this room say that we have issues with retention, hiring people at the local coffee shop. So, when local businesses continue or have a worst time finding people to hire, retain, the talented people in our workforce, when the brain drain continues, when those stereotypes that you hear about backwards West Virginia, when that dominates the conversation, when these issues get worse, the people in this room had the opportunity to do something about that. Like I said, snatching defeat from the jaws of victory, an unforced error. This is, this isn't even a, a, a situation where, um, you know, a drop catch or a Bill Buckner through the legs. It didn't even have to be doing this today. We could've been celebrating jobs and opportunities in West Virginia, but this would dominate the headlines. So, congratulations to you all. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
The gentleman fifty-first, Doug Williams is recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. To my, my friends, I want to say first and foremost that I stand before you with, with an abundance of humility in my heart, because I know what a, a difficult topic this is for, for everyone. No one likes to talk about this. It's a difficult subject, we all know that, but here we are. Uh, over the past year, uh, I had a pretty up-close and personal view of a pregnancy. My wife was, was pregnant for nine months, she carried our son a little past nine months. And I've had some friends and loved ones ask me, John, didn't that kind of change your opinion on abortion? In a, in a way, it did, because even though there was this pregnancy that I was, um, involved in, that I had a decision in starting this pregnancy, that pregnancy was never mine. I never had morning sickness. My feet never swelled. I was never worried about the decisions of natural childbirth versus a C-section. That wasn't on me. That was on my wife. And as much as I love her, and as much as I was there to, to be supporting her, except for the sixty days I was hanging out with you guys down here, as much as I was there for her, I can never feel those things or appreciate those things. And so, in that instance, if I can't put myself in her shoes, how then could I possibly contemplate every single possible pregnancy that's going to happen in this state, whether that comes from a place of rape, incest, or whatever the reason is, because that's not my right to determine? I have my own philosophical beliefs on this topic, I do, and I know many of you do, too. But I, I keep coming back to the immutable fact that my belief on something doesn't matter when it's on a situation that I can never myself be in. Not everything can be settled with syllogisms, and because, therefore, then, sometimes you have to look at the hundreds of women that are here today, and the hundreds of thousands of women in the state of West Virginia that say, this is important, this matters, and you need to be able to put their, yourself in their shoes. And that's why today, Mr. Speaker, I'll be voting no. Thank you.
The gentleman fifty-first, Doug Hanson's recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. This bill before us today is an abortion ban. And I have a lot of criticisms related to the specific components of this bill. I'm not going to go into those today. I spoke at length about those criticisms when we were in special session in July, and the bill that's come back to us today, while it's been amended, is substantially similar. It's still a ban, it's still cruel, and it's still based on a black-and-white view of the world, a view that's heavily informed by one particular religious viewpoint. And it's a view that I believe is out of step, not just with the majority of people in my district, but with the majority of West Virginians. And there are other approaches that this legislature could have taken. And one approach that I think is worth looking at is some of the language that's in Roe versus Wade, Roe versus Wade, as we prepare to say goodbye to Roe versus Wade. I just wanted to read a passage or two to demonstrate the nuance that went into that decision, and some of the things that you may not be aware of if you haven't actually looked at it. So, when the Supreme Court ruled about fifty years ago, they did recognize the sensitivity of this issue, the nuance that's required to get it right. And near the beginning of the decision, they, they say that we acknowledge our awareness of the sensitive and emotional nature of the abortion controversy, of the vigorous opposing views, even among physicians, and of the deep and seemingly absolute convictions that the subject inspires. One's philosophy, one's experiences, one's exposure to the raw edges of human existence, one's religious training, one's attitudes toward life and family and their values, and the moral standards one establishes and seeks to observe are all likely to influence and to color one's thinking and conclusions about abortion. And in addition, population growth, pollution, poverty, and racial overtones tend to complicate and not simplify the problem. It's something that I think they got right in that decision. They recognized how sensitive the issue was and the nuance that's required to get it right. But here's one more thing that I think they got right. The recognition that it's not up to politicians to resolve the question of when life begins. This is what they said about that. We need not resolve the difficult question of when life begins. When those trained in the respective disciplines of medicine, philosophy, and theology are unable to arrive at any consensus, the judiciary, at this point in the development of man's knowledge, is not in a position to speculate as to the answer. And they go on to say that it should be sufficient to note briefly the wide divergence of thinking on this most sensitive and difficult question. And they say something that's personal to me. They talk about that it appears to be the predominant, though not the unanimous attitude of the Jewish faith, that life does not begin until live birth. I'm not trying to convince you that you should adopt that faith, or that you should adopt that viewpoint. But I am trying to convince you that they had it right, that it's not up to the court, and it's not up to politicians in Charleston to determine when life begins. Because we could make good policy on abortion that reflects wide differences in fervently-held religious beliefs. And referring back to that sentence from Roe about the Jewish faith, I think back to the testimony that was provided in July before the Judiciary Committee, when a rabbi provided testimony. And I found that testimony to be compelling. I've been thinking about it a little bit since then. You know, as he testified, rabbis have been thinking about abortion for thousands of years, and they continue to do so to find answers to these questions that are consistent with their faith, consistent with the Torah, consistent with advances in modern medicine. That's an approach that I would've hoped that this legislature would take, an approach that recognizes that there are competing interests between the mother and the child, that abortion's not a black-and-white issue, and that nuance is required to get it right. So, the nuance that Roe adopted, as you probably know, is that there are two very legitimate rights at stake here. There's the right of the mother. But Roe also talks about the important and legitimate interest in potential life. That's in Roe. That radical document that so many people cheered. that so many people cheered when it was overturned, the important and legitimate interest in political, in potential life. So that brings me back to the bill before us today, House Bill 302, which in my personal opinion does not do those things that the Supreme Court got right in the Roe decision. House Bill 302 certainly appears to me to be legislating one particular religion's view on abortions without nuance. It's essentially a ban. As I mentioned in July, I think this is a cruel bill. It's cruel to people of color. It's cruel to low-income West Virginians. It's cruel to victims of rape and incest because it takes the side of the perpetrators and not the victims. I want to be on the side of the victims. This bill's cruel to doctors. It's cruel to women in general. And it's a ban. This is a government mandate that interferes with private, lifesaving medical decisions, and it gives politicians control over a person's body, over their family, and over their future. And we should be protecting personal freedoms, not taking away access to health care. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Lady from the 24th Circuit, Mazaki is recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. No one takes freedoms away. If we have a choice, do we know how babies are made? Do we educate our next generation? Do they know that it takes tut-tango? Do we, as parents, take the responsibility to educate our children, to have a relationship with our children, to know when there is something wrong with them, to know that they need to go to the doctor and if something happened? My sister, I remember when I was a young, young, junior, a girl, yes, my sister came home from a campere, and I remember she went to my mom, and she said, "Mom, it happened." And what did my mom do? She brought her to the doctor. And here, in America, we have the choice. I went down to Walgreens, and I looked up, "You can buy the Plan B pill right there in Walgreens." I mean, over the counter. You just go there, and you get it. You have 72 hours to deal with this. I don't want to hear this.
Guests are welcome in this house. You are welcome in this house, but you will be You are welcome in this house, but you will be in order. House will be in order while the Sergeant-at-Arms removes that guest from the gallery.
Thank you. I respect, I respect all people. They can, everybody has the chance to say what they want to say. But I am saying that we all have to have responsibilities and to educate our children and to take care of everybody, okay? We, the older generation, need to take care of our younger generation. We know how life is, and life is not fair. We know that. But no one takes your choice away to be responsible, to live a responsible life. If you have sex, the chances that you might get pregnant are there, yes. But now, how do we educate? We educate by living our life responsibly. We go and we... See, where I am from, as a German citizen originally, okay? I grew up, it was very normal to get the birth control pill at 16 and just get, and just do whatever you...
Lady from the 24th Circuit, Mazaki still has the floor.
...Germany, at 16, you would get the birth control pill, and you could just live your life the way you want to. But when I came to the United States, when I got God in my life, and I learned that there is a different life that you can live to be happy and beautiful, then you, and you have to have the responsibility to... You can, you can, you can go and do whatever you want to. But being, having an abortion is not birth control. I am sorry. You are having scars for the rest of your life if you do abortions. This is not a good thing for your body to do. You have to be responsible and get your education done beforehand, before you have sex. We are not talking about the abused ones. But we, as moms, you as dads, you need to be there for everybody, for the boys, for the girls, and we need to educate our next generation. I am, I want to celebrate today because I have learned since I came to here, to the United States, and we got, we have God as our protector, right? We have the chance to live a wonderful life, but life begins at conception. And I am glad that we are able to save so many babies. And we are protecting, and we are not... I thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen, you are welcome to observe these proceedings. But if members and guests cannot contain themselves, we will clear the galleries. House will be at ease while the security clears the galleries.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Ladies and gentlemen, between both of our bodies, in the House and in the Senate, there are 134 of us. And I commend all of you all on your journeys and your paths to get here. See, what we do in the People's House and for the state of West Virginia, it's not for the faint of heart. It's a hard, hard job, as my two good friends from the 51st just talked about today. It's not easy. But you know what? When you meet a challenge such as this, it tests your character. What are you going to do? You're going to lie? You're going to steal? Because just today, my colleague from the Eastern Panhandle had an amendment about local control. We refused it. Most of the people in this body, since I've been here, campaigned on local control. And just about everything else, we'll put it up for that vote. But not on this one, because the people's voice doesn't matter to you. Smaller government. This is the epitome of government overreach. Now, see, the hard part is, is because you personally disagree with something, you want to refute everything else that you profess about and totally ignore it. That's the hard part, or not listen, and just turn your back, because it's easier that way. You know, while I might disagree with the lady from the 32nd, I highly respect her and her viewpoints. And she said something earlier that it stuck with me, because I know, or at least I think, most of the people in this body disdain rape. And she was accurate in saying that men, that men are going to use women's body for their own benefit. That's awful. But it's very ironic that men in this body are going to use women's body again for their benefit, to stay in office, to get a PAC check. That's what you're doing because some of you want to ascend to a higher office, and you got to keep that money rolling in. So you're just going to do it on the backs of women. And I usually don't even get up in arms about this, but I've got to for them, because enough is enough. I would venture to say that most people on this body, outside of maybe a couple physicians, they don't understand or know about the science or biology of a woman's menstrual cycle. They don't understand anything when it comes to women's reproductive parts. But we're going to sit in here and act like we have the knowledge and wherewithal to make these decisions. Talk about morals and ethics. Some of you, we come down here every year, and we use the rhetoric of the lies, of somebody's going to come in your house and take your guns. And nobody should be able to do that. But you're going to go inside a woman's uterus and tell her what to do. You're just not principled. What are we doing here? Stop and think. These things are hard. I know they are. It's going to challenge your personal ideology with doing what's right. But doing what was right was to let the people decide. We didn't want to do that. And so, Mr. Speaker, once again, that flag is beside you. This flag I love, American flag, and it speaks about liberty and freedom. And we're going to deny our fellow American liberty and freedom. So I got something for West Virginia today. And I'm sad to say it, because I love my country, I love my state. But I'm going to ask that West Virginians fly that faggot half-staff, because the West Virginia GOP just killed liberty.
The gentleman from the 1st Circuit, McGinnis, recognized.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Speaker. I just want to say a couple remarks, and I'll promise I will actually be brief this time. Heard a lot of propositions of political principles that are supposedly in violation right now, from the other side of the aisle mostly, local control, things of that nature. But what we're talking about right now is a subject, an issue, a fundamental that is of a different kind. We're talking about something that must be a presupposition held by all of us concretely that underlies everything else that we hold dear in society. The fundamental human right to life itself, that is that presupposition, and that is that concrete foundation that all other rights we speak about rests upon. So abortion, abortion itself can never be a human right. In fact, it is the opposite of what that is. Abortion itself is a deep wound in our society, because it destroys the presupposition, the concrete foundation on which our Western society was built upon to begin with, that all life is inherently valuable. And it also rests upon one proposition, one proposition that is a moral truth that's eternal. It's superior to our minds, because you cannot change the fact that it is always wrong universally to deliberately kill innocent life. And see, that's why we always hear these arguments in favor of abortion, changing terms. Well, they got to define life some other way. Or they got to, you know, justify, you know, the taking of human life, per some further evil. I have yet to hear anyone actually stand up and say abortion itself, the killing of innocent life, is inherently right, because they know it's not right. It's really not that controversial. It's only controversial because typically, the people that argue in favor of abortion are simply arguing to justify abortion. They've already pre-confirmed the belief that they want to have this option open, and so they build the argument from there. Which other path they want to take, that's usually what typically takes place. And that's unfortunate. We have now had over 50 years of a culture and the advent of Roe versus Wade that has changed our society in fundamentally negative, terrible ways. And it's going to take a long time to rebuild a just and moral society that's oriented properly towards ultimately the truth. Because there are certain moral truths that you cannot escape, whether you want to or not. Just like mathematical truths, you can posit that three and two makes six, but it always universally makes five. And you can posit that, yes, it's right to deliberately and intentionally kill innocent life. But you know, deep down, it's always wrong. These truths are superior to our minds, just like you can't alter mathematical truths, because you didn't construct them from your... because you didn't construct them from your mind. They're superior to our minds. They stand above us. The principle judges us. We don't judge the principle. We need to get back to a society that's oriented towards a just society, that's oriented not just towards truth, but part of that subset is oriented towards power structures in our society that serve the vulnerable and the weak, and not power structures that serve our own self-interests and tell people anything they want to hear. We need to get back to protecting the weak and the innocent, and there's no more, there's nothing more innocent and weak and vulnerable than an unborn child.
The gentleman of 67, Doug Doyle is recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I'm going to vote against the bill. I think it's a bad bill. It's a bad bill in a lot of ways. And in its entirety, it is far too restrictive. It is restrictive to the point of being punitive to women who are pregnant. But it is also a bill that I am convinced the vast majority of the people of West Virginia do not wish us to pass. And I think we will find that out if we pass this bill. Thank you.
The gentleman of 16, Doug Linnville is recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Something happened on the floor of this House that I didn't think I would ever see, and that was a disruption of governmental process, and a friend and colleague and very strong woman was interrupted multiple times in attempting to give her remarks on this legislation. And in fact, her mic was even cut off during a portion of it. And therefore, Mr. Speaker, I ask unanimous consent that her remarks be placed in the appendix of the Journal, so that forever she can be heard. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Have you heard the gentleman's request or their objections? Okay, there are no objections. Be so ordered. The gentleman of 37, Doug Pushkin is recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. First, I'd like to commend my friend from the first for his brevity. And I'd like to address a few things that have been said. I believe my friend from the 24th made a comment about how are we going to educate people? First of all, you don't get there by pulling money out of the public school system. And I'll go further than that. You don't get there by shutting down the only Women's Health Center in the entire state. This might surprise some of you, but when I was a teenager, I think I was 12 or 13 years old, I was actually enrolled in a class over there on the West Side at the Women's Health Center. They do more than perform abortions. They actually have a lot of care for women. They check for cancer. And also, what they used to do is provide sex education. And I would go on to say that, I guarantee you, they have prevented more unwanted pregnancies than any politician has ever dreamt of. But this legislation will shut that facility down. And more important than that, what it, worse than that, what it really does is, it robs people of a fundamental freedom to just simply make a decision for themselves. And I strongly disagree with my friend from the first. And first of all, this bill doesn't define life, nowhere in it. The resolution that he introduced did, but we didn't run that resolution. It's so few of you's put your name on. We didn't run that resolution. But this bill, to me, it's not about the procedure of abortion. It's not about abortion. This is simply about control. And I think that's why you'll find that so many people disagree with you on this particular issue. Before Roe overturned, was overturned, this was hypothetical. This is very real now, and people are paying attention. And while there might be several, 100 people or so that are here and very angry, and I can understand why, I can tell you, there are thousands more at home who are watching. And there are thousands more than that that are at work, and they're not watching, but they're going to pay attention. And I think that we're going just a little bit too far, because people want to be left My grandfather, I've talked about him a lot in here, I think. He was probably the most influential person in my life. He was a lifelong Republican. He would not recognize today's Republican Party, because he was a conservative. He believed in small government, and he thought people should just mind their own business and leave other people alone. This is the most intrusive bill that I've seen. And yeah, I've not seen this kind of reaction from a crowd in the House before either, but I can understand why, because we haven't passed legislation like this, that was so intrusive on somebody's most personal decision, a difficult decision, often not made for birth, in most cases, not made for birth control, but because somebody's facing a serious health issue, or somebody was raped, or somebody was the victim of incest. And all we're saying is, they should simply be able to make this very personal, important decision on their own, with their family, with their doctor, without you, without you. You should stay out of it. That's all we're saying. Stay out of other people's business. And I'm quite confident that most people agree with us. Mind your own business. And while we have asked, we've, you know, put out statements asking for this to be placed on the ballot, and we made an amendment today, offered an amendment today for it to be placed on the ballot, because we wanted to know what the people, let the people decide, I can assure you, it will be on the ballot, because people are paying attention to this vote. And I also know many people chose not to run again, many people are running for other offices. Many people won't be back. Other people don't know it yet, but they're not going to be back, because this decision people are paying attention to. And you could go, we could pose in front of ribbon cuttings and stand there when we're breaking the ground on a new bridge, or we can get up and on the stage at the Culture Center and talk about all the jobs that we had very little to do with. And people will forget that. People will forget what you say you gave them, but they're never going to forget what you took away. So if this is the last decision that you make in this House, and it very well may be the last decision you make in this House, I would say choose very wisely.
The lady from the 13th, Doug Kraus is recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I have been pro-life since I was 10 years old, not because I'm a Christian, but because I have a heart. I've had five pregnancies. I have five children. I've been pregnant for 200 weeks, three different decades, two different millenniums, and two different centuries. I have donated my eggs to three infertile couples. I've been pregnant as an unwed teen mother. I've been pregnant and had babies in a bad marriage, pregnant and had babies in a good marriage. None of that has held me back, because look where I am now. Babies should not be found worthy of life because of the circumstances of their conception. All babies are worthy. I could not, would not, and will not look at any of my children and say that one is more worthy of life than the other because of the circumstances in which they were conceived and born. And I will not and will never do that to another baby either. I will be voting yes on this bill to save as many babies' lives as possible in the state of West Virginia. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Lady from the 51st, Doug Walker is recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. My colleagues, I'm going to start out by reading a letter from one of my constituents from Montegale County, who was here with us when we had the public hearing on this very bill. My name is Ash Orr. My pronouns are they, he, and I am a constituent from Montegale County. While I cannot be here in person today, I am asking that my truth be stated. I share my story of being raped as a child, and as well as being an abortion patient on this very floor back in July. During that time, I was misgendered by the person conducting the public hearing. I was laughed at by the delegate from Logan County, and I was called an abomination as I was escorted off the floor. I was then harassed via email by the senator from Will County, who took it upon himself to call my story of surviving rape pathetic and urged me to flee to God. Today, those delegates and senators believe that they were attacking a trans 32-year-old rape and domestic abuse survivor and abortion patient. In reality, they were attacking the 10-year-old who was raped behind closed doors, missed their period, and had to sneak pregnancy tests from their mother. They are attacking the 15-year-old who was pinned down in a car and told they deserved this. They are attacking the 21-year-old who had an abortion to save their life. They are attacking survivors and protecting our rapists. I should not have to explain to a room of adults, but a child does not have a body suited to carrying or delivering a fetus. The World Health Organization found that the leading killer of girls 15 to 19, who are years older, is pregnancy and childbirth complications. Expecting young children to fully understand what's happening is sadistic and abusive. Why is it difficult for y'all to care about the trauma inflicted on a child who was already sexually violated and then forced to give birth? How do you think they will ever have a normal, happy, healthy life? Why should their life be sacrificed? It is evident that those who support this abortion ban view those of us with uteruses as property, rather than individuals who deserve bodily autonomy. Not only are those supporting this ban eager to be punishing those of us with uterus, are delighted in the idea of punishing a child, rape survivor, their parents, and their medical team, yet not the rapist. Why is this? We're a state that doesn't like people telling us what to do. Our independence is something we, as a state, take pride in. Now, an entire demographic is at risk of having their independence stripped away, being told that we cannot make basic decisions over our own bodies because a land full of extremists want to force their religious beliefs onto others, all by dedicated to making the process as cruel and dangerous as possible. None of us in this room signed up to live in a land where freedom and democracy are concepts and name only. Regardless of the outcome, y'all will not silence us. We will keep organizing against you. We will vote you out of office. We will not be going backwards. We're citizens, not property. Keep abortion safe and legal in our estate. Thank you, Ash Orr. Mr. Speaker, if I may so, speak to the bill. Thank you. So I had a list of questions. As the gentlelady was speaking about the bill, as my dear colleagues were speaking their piece about the bill, I want to apologize to one of my colleagues who could not speak her piece. But I also want to raise it up, because this bill brings out a lot of emotions. This bill brings out a lot of side conversations, whether they are up in the gallery or whether they're behind us at the entrance. See, respect should be given to each and every one of us, whether you agree or you don't agree. Can I get a point of order, Mr. Speaker? Because I'm hearing him over myself.
The chair can barely hear anything. What, just to state the point? The chair agrees there's a lot of interference. The chair can barely hear up here at all. Oh, okay. The chair will ask all members to take side conversations to the corners of the room.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. So what study was used to determine eight weeks for a rape and incest victim to process their trauma and report to law enforcement in order to obtain their abortions? Does the bill allow for an exception if the assaulted person is not comfortable speaking with law enforcement? What if the attacker is a member of law enforcement, connected to law enforcement? Who is the victim to report to? Studies of the infant in maternal mortality rate in the state, the HHS, three years behind we passed that bill in 2019. What gives each of us the right to remove the freedom from anyone? Why do we get to cherry pick what is important in regards to life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness? And what gives any of us the right to be peeping times in anyone's bedroom? Why do you feel that persons who can get pregnant, give birth, is not capable of making their own decisions of becoming a parent? West Virginians, are mountaineers always free? How do we live a responsible life when grandparents, great-grandparents are raising their children? How do we live a responsible life? And the only thing you may know is being in a system where it's foster care, juvenile, detention. How are we to live a responsible life when we don't have the wraparound services we need in order not just to survive as mountaineers, but to thrive? How do you define a responsible life? As each and every one of us has different footprints, our journeys are all different. So how do you define a responsible life? What are the prerequisites of a responsible life? Two-parent home, same-sex home, religious home, socioeconomic level in a home, maybe to have a structure of a home? So how do you educate a one-year-old, a two-year-old, a three-year-old, a four-year-old, a five-year-old, a six-year-old, a seven-year-old, an eight-year-old? Oh, yeah, I'm going there. A nine-year-old, a 10-year-old, an 11-year-old, a 12-year-old, a 13-year-old, 14, 15, 16, 17, 18, 19, 20, 21, and beyond, who may be raped or sexually assaulted, who may have a disability, who is poor, and who lacks comprehensive sexual education? These narrow exceptions are unacceptable. These narrow exceptions are a gag order on the majority of survivors of sexual assault. These narrow exceptions are a gag order on the majority of survivors of sexual assault. Narrow exceptions are causing safety risks for survivors. Narrow exceptions are dangerous, disrespectful, and dismissive. Narrow exceptions are narrow-minded. Abortion is a score for the rest of your life. Well, I can speak truth to that. As I've told you many times, I am an abortion patient. What that abortion allowed me to do was to take care of my late son. What that abortion allowed me to do was to continue working my job. What that abortion allowed me to do is now have my second king. What that abortion allowed me to do was to have a choice and not be dictated by one. The reason of that abortion, as my colleague from the 37th said, is none of your business. Do you not think that we check enough boxes in this society? Now, you want me to check one about reproductive health care? You want me to check one about health care? A complete ban? Or what would be next? A ban of repeating on freedom is a call of action for change? I am shaken to my core. I will definitely be a red vote on this bill because I definitely respect the choices of the mountaineers that I know is capable of making their decisions on their health care. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Are you ready for the question? Does Lady from 32nd, Dugga Kessinger, wish to close debate on the bill? If not, the question before the House is, shall the bill pass? Those in favor of passing the bill will vote aye. Those opposed will vote no. The clerk will prepare the machine.
The following members have paired. Delegate Brown, yea.
Has every member voted? So the clerk will close the machine and ascertain the result. On this question, there are 77 ayes, 17 nays, 6 members absent. Majority of members having voted in the affirmative. The chair declares that bill passed. The clerk will please report the title.
House Bill 302 clarifying West Virginia's abortion laws.
Are there amendments to the title? If not, the title as read by the clerk will be in remain the title of the bill. Lady from the 49th, Lady from 32nd.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I move the bill be made effective from passage.
Lady from the 32nd, for what purpose? The gentleman from the 42nd, Dugga Long, an accurate recognition.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Request unanimous consent that I be added as a yes vote to that bill. Can I do that?
Was the gentleman, was the gentleman, did the gentleman vote on the bill?
I missed the vote. I was hitting it. It didn't register before he closed.
Oh, then, then, yes. If you were at your seat and you did try to vote and your vote did not register on the board, then, yes, the clerk will record your vote as having voted in the affirmative, if you were present in your seat and voting.
Well, the, the lights had not been cleared. I hit it three or four times. It didn't register, so.
Okay. Then, then the gentleman will be added as an affirmative vote on the bill.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you for bringing that to the chair's attention. Okay, the question now, again, is on the motion by the lady from the 32nd that House Bill 302 be made effective from passage. Those in favor of that motion will vote aye. Those opposed will vote no. The clerk will prepare the machine. Has every member voted? So the clerk will close the machine and ascertain the result. On this question, there are 77 ayes, 17 nays, 6 members absent. Two-thirds of members voting in the affirmative. The chair declares the bill effective from passage. The clerk will please communicate the action of the House to the Senate. Are there further Senate messages? Are there further Senate messages? If not, resolutions.
House Resolution 302, Statement of the Sentiments of the House of Delegates Upon Passage of House Bill 302, West Virginia's abortion or West Virginia's Law Governing Abortion.
Lady from 32nd.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I ask unanimous consent that the committee reference be dispensed with and that the resolution be taken up for immediate consideration and put upon its adoption.
Does the chair hear objection? Objection is heard. Objection is heard.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I move that the bill, or resolution.
All right. The lady from the 32nd moves that House Resolution 302 be taken up for immediate consideration. This is a debatable question. Gentleman 37th, Dugga Pushkin, is recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Point of inquiry, is this is the resolution that was introduced during the first part of the third special session?
It is not. That resolution is on unfinished business. The sponsor of that resolution submitted a new resolution.
Okay. Well, could we have time to read it?
The House will, yes, the House will stand at ease while members are given that opportunity. Yes, the gentleman's point is, is well taken. The House will, the House will be at ease momentarily to give members an opportunity to have the document before them, before you're asked to vote on whether to even take it up for immediate consideration. We will vote on that motion after members have had that opportunity. Gentleman 37th is recognized.
At the same time, I'd ask that the resolution be read.
Okay. That's, that is also appropriate. Clerk will read the resolution.
House Resolution 302, Providing for a Statement of the Sentiments of the House of Delegates Upon the Passage of HB 302, West Virginia's Law Governing Abortion. Whereas through Roe v. Wade and Planned Parenthood v. Casey, the Supreme Court of the United States effectively granted every American woman a constitutional right to abortion, which individual states could restrict or expand, but never eliminate entirely. And whereas the Supreme Court has overturned these decisions as attempts to legislate through the judicial power, has declared itself ignorant as to the moral character of the act of abortion, and has returned the question of abortion to the states and their elected representatives. And whereas the consequence of this change is a neutralization of those West Virginia laws now irrelevant, which, which limited and restricted constitutionally granted abortion access in the past. And whereas the attention to abortion's legality in West Virginia has now rightfully centered on what preceded Roe v. Wade and Planned Parenthood v. Casey, whereby our state's law implicitly declares the act of abortion immoral for a just society. And whereas West Virginians have historically rejected the status of abortion as a right, which rejection has been most recently and explicitly confirmed in 2018 with the electorate passing an amendment to the state constitution specifically denying that the state constitution recognizes a right to abortion. Therefore, be it resolved by the House of Delegates that this legislature reaffirms West Virginia's historic rejection of abortion as an act ill-fitting for a peaceful and virtuous people. As a society in which abortion is a right is one which devalues the source of its own existence, its mothers and their children. And be it further resolved that the maintenance of a peaceful and prosperous society depends upon the subordination of power and interest to the well-being of mothers as their bearing and rearing of children determines the existence and quality of our common life together with infinitely greater efficacy than any federal or state policy. And be it further resolved that we are cognizant that as an institution, motherhood is prior to the state, and as such, the state must work to serve mothers and their interests as the health of any state can be determined in the main by their health and happiness. And be it further resolved that the now-defunct legal opinion that mothers must be able to abort their children regardless of what a state's people have historically believed and legislated regarding the question inverted this common sense. And be it further resolved that rather than protecting the very source of our common life, the overreach of the court allowed powerful interests to devalue motherhood into a mere option without privilege or importance. And be it further resolved that the previous decisions of the United States Supreme Court effectively empowered those who would describe motherhood as merely a fungible good that could and should be sacrificed to their own interests, including, most obviously, the interests of those private entities which rely on the labor of women and find their capacity to become mothers detrimental to their goals, the interests of those who directly profit from the procurement of abortion, and the interests of those men who would enjoy women merely as sexual partners without becoming partners in their sacrifice as mothers. And be it further resolved that such a radical individualism is inconsistent with West Virginia's tradition of honoring those vocations which contribute more directly and more fundamentally to the common good than do others, such as emergency responders and members of the armed forces. And be it further resolved that by giving us life, motherhood surpasses even the sacrifices inherent in these esteemed vocations. And be it further resolved that the state, therefore, ought to treat mothers with their own sacrifices. And be it further resolved that we are cognizant that motherhood imposes many obligations upon women. And be it further resolved that among these are that mothers are obligated to care for their children. That all decent governments must recognize and enforce this obligation alongside the obligation of fathers. And that parents must provide for the health, safety, education, and emotional well-being of their children. And be it further resolved that motherhood does not impose obligations only upon women, nor only upon fathers, but upon all of society. And when a woman becomes a mother, she becomes a rightful recipient of society's care and solicitude. And be it further resolved that she has a right to this care and solicitude, which empowers her in her ability to care for her children. And at the very, and at the least, this right demands that the state protect her from powerful interests that would pressure her through threats or promises to reject her elevated position and return her to the ranks of normal citizens. And be it further resolved that society's obligation goes beyond such minimal protections offered by the state. And be it further resolved that society must positively serve mothers in their most profound and important vocation. And be it further resolved that West Virginia's historic rejection of abortion implicitly recognizes that the obligation, recognizes the obligation a mother has to her unborn child. And in doing so, it harmonizes with the pre-Roe mores and social norms which did and still do characterize the people of West Virginia, who do not countenance the neglect of children at any stage of life. And be it further resolved that we reiterate that our law must always emphasize in a greater way the obligation the rest of society has to its mothers, upon whose sacrifices it depends and whose greater need demands greater care. And be it further resolved that, therefore, this legislation affirms that the law should not center on the punishment of the mother who undergoes an abortion, but rather punish those with intent to destroy her unborn child. And be it further resolved that, therefore, the law ought to designate as criminal the abortionist, the propagandist, the boss, or anyone else who would abuse their position of relative power over a mother, making rewards of money, personal fidelity, career advancement, power, prestige, or any other good dependent on the destruction of her unborn child. And be it further resolved that it was formerly a wisdom common to all participants of the unborn debate that no woman wants an abortion and that even those who otherwise promoted it unreservedly defended their position as one which granted women the capacity to escape some evil, such as poverty, social exclusion, or abuse. And be it further resolved that women should never have to make such a hard bargain and that those persons act detrimentally to fundamental social morals who present motherhood as an obstacle to an otherwise happy life. And be it further resolved that just governments have long asserted that they have the duty to protect women from those who would use their relative power in order to convince them to perform acts against their conscience. And be it further resolved, by returning to our historic rejection of abortion, this legislature recognizes that this duty extends to motherhood. And be it further resolved that it takes up the power of the law for the sake of mothers who do not normally want abortion and against those that will use their power and influence to make motherhood seem untenable rather than make abortion seem unnecessary. And be it further resolved that the criminalization of abortion must only, or must be only, the beginning of West Virginia's post-Roe initiatives. And be it further resolved that we must turn now to the positive protection and flourishing of mothers as a return to the most fundamental reasons for the existence of government. And be it further resolved that as West Virginians are a moral and decent people, we must now accept the legislative challenge that this decency demands.
You've heard the resolution. The question now before the body is the motion by the lady from the 32nd to suspend the rules to dispense with the committee reference on the resolution, take it up for immediate consideration at this time. So it is a rule suspension. The question is on, shall the rules be suspended? So debate will proceed on the resolution if the rules are suspended. If the rules are not suspended, the resolution will be referred to a committee. Those in favor of suspending the rule to permit immediate consideration of the resolution will vote aye. Right. Yes, gentleman, for what purpose? The gentleman 37th, seek recognition.
It's a debatable motion.
The, the, the chair is advised by the clerk that the motion before us now is the rule suspension motion, which is not a debatable motion, but the resolution itself, if the body so chooses, will be debatable. Okay, so the question is on the rule suspension now. Those in favor of the rule suspension to proceed with consideration of the resolution at all will vote aye. Those opposed will vote no. Okay, has every member voted? If so, the clerk will close the machine and ascertain the result. On this question, there are 70 ayes, 18 nays, 12 members absent. Two-thirds of members voting in the affirmative. The chair declares the rule suspension adopted. So the question now is on the resolution itself. As the sponsor of the resolution, gentleman from the first, Dugga McGeehan, is entitled to recognition if the gentleman so chooses. Okay, the gentleman 37th, Dugga Pushkin, is recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Would the author of the resolution yield?
Good.
Thank you. You introduced a similar resolution during the part one of Special Session Three, correct?
Yeah, there was. Yes, there was a similar resolution introduced in the last special session.
Okay. I see you have more sponsors on this one, so congratulations on that. But what are the differences between the two?
Substantially, there was no difference. The original essay that was written was designed to reaffirm the pre-Roe law. And so there was a miscommunication when it was turned into a resolution, which, which I didn't write, you know, into resolution format. And so there was some language that was inapplicable to a resolution format. So I corrected that to make it purely a resolution statement.
Okay. So there's no difference from what you introduced earlier? Just the format is different?
Right, yeah. The substance is, there's no difference.
All right. One more question. On the... All right, one more question. On the, um, the third to last, uh, be it resolved, be it further resolved here, that the criminalization of abortion must be only the beginning of West Virginia's post-Roe initiatives. What exactly you mean by that? This is only the beginning?
Well, I think if you read the resolution, it has to deal with the, uh, elevation of vocation of motherhood, and I think we're obligated, not just as a governing body, but as a society, to further, uh, positive laws to, uh, help, um, assist, uh, mothers in their elevated vocation that we should hold sacred as our common source of existence. Um, mothers that maybe not have the resources at hand, um, you know, um, there's all sorts of different ideas. I've been collaborating with some of my colleagues on, on how to help achieve this going forward. So, largely, positive measures that we can take at the state level to, uh, to help forward mothers in need and mothers that have lack of, um, you know, family resources, family support, and resources in general, and other such things. So, I'd be happy to share a lot of specific ideas with you at a later point, but maybe this isn't the venue for that.
Thank you. I'm, I'm glad to hear that, what we mean by, uh, this is only the beginning, that we go further to actually, uh, help young families and, you know, there was a bill that we had. Thank you for, for yielding, let me just keep you standing. Um, briefly, I'm glad to hear that, uh, what he meant by only the beginning is, uh, something positive. Um, I've not seen it yet. I've not seen, uh, much positive, and I, you know, as I read this, I just remind the body that, um, this isn't Hungary. This isn't what we're supposed to be resolving here. I'm, I'm not even sure what country I woke up in today.
Is there debate on the resolution? The gentleman thirty-sixth, Duncan Rowe, is recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I, I find this to be salt in the wound. I, I, it's, it's, I'm completely surprised by it. I've never seen this done on a bill as controversial as this. And what it says to me very clearly, because I'm old enough to remember when people openly said that a woman's place is in the home, is in the kitchen, and is pregnant. That's what this resolution says, is that's what a woman's place is, to be pregnant and to be in the kitchen and to be in, at home. That, that women who are induced to have careers and not have children are being, uh, abused and, and, and confused by what the role should be that they have in society. I just can't believe that we are proposing a resolution like this. It doesn't elevate mu- motherhood. It denigrates women. It denigrates women who want to be equal in this society, who want to be, excuse me, something more than a mother, that want, that want to be a mother and also to take their place at leadership roles throughout society. I mean, that's what we've gone through for women's rights for the, the last forty years. This is an amazing statement. This is an amazing declaration, and it ought to be, it ought to be voted down. It's amazing. Listen to it. Listen to, it's not an elevation of motherhood. It's a denigration of women to being nothing more than mothers. They have a right to be who they want to be. I urge the members to reject this resolution.
Lady from thirty-second, there, Kessinger is recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. And I'm going to stand, um, in support of this resolution. I think that the gentleman's reading of the resolution, um, really misses the point. The resolution isn't meant to denigrate or, um, tell women that they can't be anything more than a mother. It's meant to reinforce the truth of the matter, that motherhood is a valuable vocation i- i- in this country, in this state, that we are, I'm so thankful that we have mothers in this state who have sacrificed so much to, to, to carry their children to term, to raise their children, and to assert that women have to choose between being great mothers or being productive members of society or in their workplace or whatever it may be, is honestly an affront to, to empowerment of women. I am so tired of living in a state and in a society that says women can do anything except raise this baby without the dad in the picture, or women can do anything except have a child and finish college. At the end of the day, I believe that women are more than capable of accomplishing and achieving whatever dream they set forth, and that they are more than capable of being a mother. And I can think of nothing more beautiful than the fact that a woman has the ability to create and carry life, and to honor that in a society that often tells mothers or says things that, oh, she's just a stay-at-home mom. That could not be, I hate that word. I hate that phrase, she's just a stay-at-home mom. Mothers are incredibly important to any moral society, and you know as well as I do that the foundation of a moral society is strong families. And I think this resolution sets, sets, sets our, sets us up to the fact that we as a, as we, we as a state and as a community are going to come alongside women and support them as they, as they carry their children. In fact, we had a bill, um, that, that we took up, that was a Culture of Life bill, is what I've been calling it. And I hope that it will come back next legislative session. I won't be here, but I hope that you all will take it. But I want to encourage every single person to look at this resolution for what it is and what it actually does, and, um, give it the green vote that it deserves.
The gentleman sixty-seven, Duncan Doyle, is recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Uh, I, I accept that the intent of this was not to denigrate women, but I believe that is the effect. Uh, I read down through it, uh, as the clerk was, uh, was reading it. Uh, so, so, um, I've seen it on, on, on the page and I've, and I've heard it. And what bothers me more than anything is the tone. I think it is cavalier and condescending, and with apologies to my colleagues who are members of the cloth, it is overly preachy. And so, for that reason, I think it should be rejected. Thank you.
Lady from thirty-fifth, Duncan Young, is recognized.
Thank you so much, Mr. Speaker. Um, you guys know, I'm a mom. Um, I find this resolution to be, I'm like, I don't honestly have the words at the moment. Um, I kind of can't believe this. Uh, everyone is standing up and saying the word vocation as if we're in the nineteen fifties. Who, who, do you people use that word? No? We don't talk about that. This, this is written like it's for the nineteen fifties. Uh, I don't know what this is going to do, because resolutions, they don't do anything. I don't see any of you all passing bills providing paid leave to families at all. Do that. You run on it, but you don't do it. So, do things that actually help families. Don't write resolutions. This is ridiculous. I'm a no.
Question again is on the adoption of the resolution. Is there further debate on the resolution? The lady from forty-eighth, Duncan Kimble, is recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. As a sponsor, as a co-sponsor on this resolution, first of all, I'd like to thank the delegate from the first with, uh, the drafting of the resolution, and also, uh, my friend from Fayette. Um, I signed on to this, and I did have reservations at first. It is not denigrating. I was just a stay-at-home mom, and I'm here. And I'm here in evidence, and I would like to let everybody know, with this resolution and with what we just passed, women are more than just having babies, but you can have babies and you can go to school. You can go and do any career and you can be anything you want to be. But what we need to do and what we need to address, and you'll find that in the very last lines of this resolution, is that we, as this body, need to now focus on legislation, that what we will, what we will do to support the ideas that we've set forth today. It's all about life. It's human life. It's not about a cluster of cells. It's about being a mom, being a dad, and thinking differently. So, I thank you. I support this resolution, and I hope you will too.
Again, the question is on the adoption of the resolution. Is there debate on the resolution? If not, those in favor of adoption of the resolution will say aye. Opposed will say no. Roll call vote is demanded. Is demand sustained? Demand is sustained. The question is on the adoption of the resolution. Those in favor of adoption of the resolution will vote aye. Those opposed will vote no. The clerk will prepare the machine.
The following members have paired. Delegate Pinson, yea. Delegate Williams, nay.
Have all members voted? Have all members voted? So, the clerk will close. Have all members voted? Okay, clerk will close the machine and ascertain the result. On that question, there were sixty-six ayes, seventeen nays, and seventeen members absent. Majority of members voting in the affirmative. The chair declares that resolution adopted. Are there further resolutions? If not, lady from the forty-ninth.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I move subject to announcements that the House adjourns signing die.
Question is on the motion that's subject to announcements. The House adjourned the third extraordinary session, signing die. Are there announcements? Gentleman the eighth, Duncan Anderson.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. To the members of, uh, the Energy and Manufacturing Committee and the House Gov. Org. Committee, our, our joint, uh, interim committee meeting will take place fifteen minutes after, um, uh, our adjournment. Uh, people from the Nuclear Regulatory Commission are here to make a presentation to our committee. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
That was the Joint Committee on Energy and Manufacturing?
Yes.
And the Joint Committee on Government Organization?
And Government Organization.
And that committee meeting will take place in fifteen minutes in the chamber?
Yes, yes, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you. Gentleman fifty-first, Duncan Steller.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. The Joint Committee on Education will not meet today.
Chairman of the eleventh, Duncan Keaton.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I ask unanimous consent that remarks from the lady from the thirty-second and the lady from the forty-eighth on the adoption of House Resolution 302 be recorded and printed in the appendix of the Journal.
Okay, are there objections? And no objections are heard. Gentleman the third, Duncan Fleury, is recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I would ask that the comments from, um, my colleagues from the fiftieth, all the delegates from the fifty-first, sixteenth, and thirty-seventh on House Bill 302 be printed in the appendix of the Journal.
There are other objections? And no objections are heard. Are there further announcements? If not, the question again is on the motion that the House adjourned the third extraordinary session, signing die. Those, yes, gentleman forty-seven, Duncan Phillips.
Sorry, Mr. Speaker. Thank you. Um, I'd like to move that, uh, the gentleman from the first's remarks on, uh, 302 be printed in the appendix of the Journal.
There are, are there objections to that? We'll treat that as a request for unanimous consent. Okay, there are no objections heard. Again, further announcements? Gentleman sixty-six, Duncan Espinosa.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Just a reminder to members that your laptops should be left here on your desk. Uh, there's some maintenance scheduled to be performed, so, uh, please leave your laptops on the desk so they, so that work can be completed. Thank you.
Okay, again, further announcements at this time? If not, the question is on the motion that the third extraordinary session be adjourned, signing die. Those in favor of the motion will please say aye. Opposed will please say no. The ayes have it, the third extraordinary session is adjourned, signing die.